Good evening, everyone. If we get seated, please, thank you. Again, I know I already mentioned this, but if you have electronic devices, if you could turn them down to a silent or vibrate mode, that would be appreciated. Good evening. This is the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, February 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. My name is Robert Tatro. I am the chair. I am calling the meeting to order. We have a lot of public hearing. Well, we only have three public hearings tonight, but we have quite a bit of things to step through to make sure we procedurally are cautious here. Fortunately, the first one is fairly easy. So I'm going to get right to it this evening. And do I have a motion? So we have a 6:00 PM applicant. I'm sorry, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Do you have a motion to open the hearing? Do I have a second? Excuse me. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, seeing none. We have a 6 o'clock PM applicant, Sinorama Worcester, requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a new electronic sign located at 151 Southwood Street, map 12 parcel 137. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Chairman, motion to open the hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, applicant is present. Yes, sir. So I'm going to yield the floor to you. If you could go ahead and just give us a description of what you'd like to accomplish, please, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My name's Mike Wood. I own Sinorama Worcester, and we have been contracted by Advanced Energy to install a sign. This is about 15 feet back or more, actually, from the road. And included in this is a digital display. This will be a full-color display in line with the other designs that are on that same street. And that is why we are seeking a special permit for that digital display as the performing function of the sign.
Okay. Before I turn it over to the board, do we have any of your butters present that would like to speak on this matter? Any of your butters for the 6:00 PM hearing? Hearing none, seeing none? I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our vice chair, Mr. Maron. Do you have any questions for the applicants, sir?
I'm going to reserve for now, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Certainly. Mr. Cussie?
I will reserve.
I have nothing, but in the interest of disclosure, Shawn Bush is my father-in-law, so I'm probably going to step back from this one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. That's fine. So just for the purpose -- oh, by the way, I have some housekeeping that I should have taken care of for the beginning, and I'm going to do it right now. We do not have Mr. Chacola with us this evening. He won't be with us for the next couple of months. So I'm moving Caitlin Bush up to full voting member this evening. But as she just mentioned, for this particular hearing, she will not be doing that, so I'm going to defer over to you, sir. Mr. Garabedian will be voting on this one. Okay, so all the data's been taken care of. Do you have any questions, sir?
I don't.
Ms. Roach?
I do.
Okay.
Can you just tell us, would the sign be operational only during business hours? Would all three -- we had like a nice picture of it. Are all three signs? Yes, thank you. Are they all going to change? I just, I'd like a little more information about the sign itself.
Sure. The top sign that you see as Advanced Energy, that is a static sign. It just lights, that's illuminated at night. The lower portion in the gray, that's actually non-illuminated, and that's a fixed sign as well. It's more of the base. The middle portion that you see Mitsubishi Electric there, that is the advertising portion that would refresh. And that can be programmed to abide by the bylaws of whatever is set forth for refresh rate, hours that it should be functioning. We can install that with a timer.
Okay, I'm good, then.
Okay, and I think we also have a town-wide sort of voluntary, if I'm not mistaken. It's a 911 or an emergency situation where if they have an amber alert or there's a fire situation, the fire department usually sends out a code, or I don't really know exactly how it works, but somewhere in the background, those signs kind of get illuminated, so that might be something you might have to get involved with as well.
Sure.
Just so you know.
It's Wi-Fi programmable. They can accept that as well.
Yeah, that's what I kind of figured. But I just want to let you know that I think, I believe, if I had a department, if they're not doing it now, it's pretty smart, but they're working on something like that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go back again one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and forgive me if it's jumping out of me. How big is the sign?
So the center portion, the programmable portion, is 66 by 40. The top is 72 by 40. So you have about, what is that? Or, excuse me, the top is 72 by 36. So overall, it's about 12 feet tall.
Is there anything there now?
There's an old post in the ground. It looks like maybe there was something there once upon a time.
Once upon a time. We have a lot of "once upon a time" in the town.
I bet you do, yeah. We set this on the inside post of what's there.
Okay, so, okay, so regular foot -- and we're meeting setbacks from the road.
Yes.
So it's an issue. So essentially, you're not -- are you asking for relief on size?
No, we're actually asking for the special permit for the display.
But, okay, for the display, for the electronic, but you don't need relief on size, though, right?
Or setback, in fact.
Or setback.
You're setting that. The only thing was the digital sign required.
Digital sign. Okay, yeah, that's why. Because I couldn't land on --
These are the size of home TV sets at this point, too, by the way. That's which is crazy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cussin?
I'm all set.
Ryan?
I'm all set.
Ms. Roach? And I just would like to add for the record, too, I did drive by this location. I'm familiar with this building. And I did set my truck where you would be pulling into the street where verse of the sign was. And quite frankly, my truck has actually extended most of it, actually, all of it is beyond where the sign would be. So there's enough room to actually pull past this sign. You don't have to worry about looking through it in either direction and still make a clear left or right onto Salford Street. So I think, especially because, you know, in the past, these types of signs we have concern with because it's, if they're positioned too close to the road, you can't see through them. So I just want to point that out for the record, that this isn't a safe location for that style of sign. So with that being said, if there's --
With respect, Mr. Chairman, I went by the location as well, but couldn't quite find it the first time. But I'm really impressed with your interaction, that you actually pulled the truck in there and --
Well, I have to be honest, I've used the machine shop next door to it, and I have a truck, and I go to, what is it, House of Wheels down there sometimes. So I'm familiar with the building, so I like, you know, while I was there, I took a drive-through.
No, just, I'm going to up my game, because your site visits are obviously more interactive than mine.
You know, we're going to, we want to make sure the town is safe. So anyway, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM applicant, Sinorama Worcester, requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a new electronic sign located at 151 Salford Street, map 12 parcel 137?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with standard conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none, and I vote in favor. So congratulations, sir. Good luck. You can contact the Department of Industrial Inspection Services, and they'll complete the permit process for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we actually finished at 6:05 in 10 minutes. That was actually probably a record recently. All right, so, did I close that hearing?
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that one's closed. 6:05, applicant Arbor Recycling requesting to amend a special permit under section 8.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a warehouse located at 47 and 49 Rockland Road, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 17 parcel 177 and 224. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Chairman, motion to open the hearing?
A second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. I see that the applicant is present and prepared, sir. I'm going to yield the floor to you. Do we have any butters that would like to speak on this before I turn it over? I just want to clear it now. Any of your butters are going to speak? Okay. Go ahead, sir, to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board. For the record, Adam Baldarelli from Fletcher-Tilton, appearing on behalf of the applicant Arbor Recycling. And with me this evening from Arbor Recycling, Kevin Kelly from the company. What's before the board this evening is a, we're asking the board to amend the special permit decision conditions that was from the December 18th meeting. I know that a lot was discussed at that meeting. It was a lengthy conversation. But what we submitted for consideration tonight is that some of what was discussed didn't quite translate into the conditions, and that's why we are here this evening. So specifically, we are asking for three things. The first is that the condition in regards to the timing, in regards to the types of trucks and the hours of those trucks be amended to be such that if they are owned by Arbor, regardless of their size or the number of wheels they have, whether they are box trucks or trailer trucks, if they are Arbor recycling trucks, that they be permitted to enter and exit the property between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. All other trucks, those not owned by Arbor recycling, what I refer to as the, and what we have referred to as the redemption center trucks, be permitted to enter and exit the property between the limited hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We're also asking that a condition be added, that specific condition be in regards to the emptying of the crushed glass happening only inside the warehouse. And lastly, the third thing we are asking the board for this evening is that the condition regarding naming Mr. Robert Lemansky, that the special permit be non-transferable, be stricken and removed in its entirety. I know, as I mentioned, we've discussed this a lot in December. A lot went on record, so I won't go through everything entirely again. But I would reiterate that the reason that we are coming before the board in regards to the timing of the trucks is that the 7 to 6 with regards to Arbor, with the 9 to 5 for the all other trucks, that was the result of a compromise. It was the result of conversations and a ultimate mutually agreeable solution between the applicant Arbor Recycling and the neighborhood representatives. The goal, the overarching goal, has been and continues to be that disruption in that area be lessened, that truck traffic is controlled, and that Arbor Recycling be a good neighbor. And that's the culmination, and all of those things considered resulted in the timing and the reasons for those time commitments that we presented on the previous date and that we are before the board again asking for amendment of. Along those same lines, being a good neighbor, limiting truck disruption, we're asking that the condition that was previously discussed but did not make its way into the special permit is that regards to the glass cans, that the feedback and the conversation was that they can be disruptive and noisy. The applicant took that into consideration and presented to the board that that happened only within the walls of the warehouse and in the interest of good faith and continuing the task of being a good neighbor, we're asking that that be re-added tonight, this time around. And lastly, there seems to be a condition, I believe it's condition number four, three or five, it names Mr. Robert Lemansky, and that's the condition, special permit be non-transferable. Mr. Robert Lemansky has nothing to do with this project. He is not, wasn't involved in this project. He is not employed by Arbor Recycling. Somehow that made its way in there, and he also mentions that it's non-transferable. So we would ask that that condition in its entirety be stricken. With those three considerations, if the board has any questions, happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to just plainly ask, these conditions that you're asking us to amend, that's the basis of the lawsuit? Is that correct?
Yes.
So you're suing us, and you're asking us to amend the permit. Is that correct?
Our goal is to resolve this matter, and obviously I have to protect the interests of the applicant and the clients.
You're doing both in tandem. Okay, okay. I'm going to reserve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
I'm going to reserve.
Ryan, even though you're not going to be voting on this one, I think, do you have any questions or concerns while you're here?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. So before I turn it over to Ms. Roach, I'm just going to remind everybody that during this hearing, we had quite a heavy evening of craziness, basically. Four or five different, really difficult hearings. It was challenging, it was confusing. I believe that these issues were raised and should have been presented as conditions. However, they were overlooked because of the nature of the meeting and the challenges that we faced. So I think this is just a correction, which would then enable to ensure that the legal action is dropped should we complete our task here this evening. So I just wanted to point that out before we move any further. So with that, any comments or questions, Ms. Roach?
Yeah, so I think mine is really more towards discussion, but I don't want to save it for discussion because I don't want to close and then have the applicant not be able to comment. But I think, a couple things. First, I think the crushing of the glass was absolutely talked about, and I am personally the one who listed the conditions, so I take full responsibility for not adding that in there because that absolutely was talked about. That was something that the neighbors, I believe, had complained about in the beginning, and once it was moved inside, they found that it was better. And now it's not in there, and the applicant is coming forward and saying, oh, we should put it in there, and when that restricts them. So I certainly think that's something to be noted. They definitely did say that they wanted the 7:00 AM to the 6:00 PM because of the traffic, because if we limited it to 9 to 5, it would sort of cause more congestion. Mr. Garabedian pointed that out. I ignored him. I am so sorry.
It's all good.
So I'm, again, fully falling on the sword of, that was absolutely my mistake. And then I guess the only additional thing in regards to this is that my understanding is the lawsuit was brought to preserve their rights because they only have 30 days to appeal, or 20 days, actually, I think, to appeal, and they literally couldn't get on the agenda in time for the next meeting. Again, I think really all for more discussion. I just, I didn't want to close the hearing and then not give the applicant another chance to reply if they wanted to. But I think that if the consensus from everybody is that opening those extra hours at the beginning and the end caused less of a congestion on what we all think of as more of a residential road, and in turn, changing these conditions helps the neighbors. And I think there's some questions whether we can technically limit the hours anyway. So I personally am fine with the conditions. I think the third random condition about Robert Lemansky, I think, was just typed incorrectly into the notes or something, because he was here for a special permit on a different, on a two-family that night. So that I obviously have no problem striking. I think that was just --
So we're not going to give Ms. Lemansky access to this building at all?
Yeah, rights to this. Yeah, no. I think that was just, that must have just been typed incorrectly when we typed up the meeting notes. But the other ones, you know, I think that overall, these conditions help the neighborhood, and I think they help the applicant and the neighbors to get along and to reduce some of that congestion at 9:00 AM when people are leaving their houses. So I'm certainly amendable. I think honestly, I should have listened to Mr. Garabedian at the first hearing, and the crushed glass was absolutely talked about, and it just didn't make it to it. So I don't think these are anything that they're sort of all of a sudden coming up with now. I think they were asked for in the beginning, and for whatever reason, they didn't make it, so.
Okay. One more time around?
I'm going to, I don't have any questions for the applicant at this point. I think I well understand what they're trying to accomplish, but I'll reserve comments from when we take it into our discussion.
Okay. So I just want to ask the applicant, if, do you want to add any comments to what Ms. Roach had to say?
Very briefly, I have to say, I echo what the chairperson, Roach, said, and I think that's accurate.
Thank you. And I see someone is here that would like to possibly speak, so if you would like to approach the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address?
Steve Chambers, 61 Bancroft. I just want to, he asked to amend it for their vehicles. How do they know whose vehicle's whose? And what's the enforcement mechanism if those other non-owned vehicles are traveling at that time? I do remember it was a concern of the neighborhood, so if they're going to limit it to their vehicles, are they all labeled? And how will they know which ones aren't theirs? Thank you.
If you could address that, please, sir?
Yes, I appreciate the question. It's a very fair question. My understanding is that Arbor Recycling's vehicles are marked Arbor Recycling, so you will know very clearly if a truck belongs to the applicant or not. The purpose of the 9 to 5 is that they're scheduled, right? So the applicant can schedule everyone else when they can come between the hours of 9 to 5, space them out, and that's the purpose of limiting the congestion, so they can control who comes and leaves. So if it doesn't have Arbor Recycling on it, and it should be on the schedule, then process of elimination is not their trucks.
Comments, concerns, before I close the public portion of the hearing?
I just, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning, when are kids going to school? When are kids going to be walking down that road? That was my big concern with starting at 9 o'clock.
In your estimation, I'm just asking, because I agree with the topic, how far are they going to be traveling down that road where the kids are? Do we know that, like, exactly, you know, roughly?
Well, it's quite a stretch there, I would say. Probably a mile.
I just wanted to bring that in for the record, that's all.
I'm just saying that that's going to be a busy road.
Okay.
That's my, safety's my concern.
No, I have nothing to add. I think Megan was --
Any of butters?
Yeah, we had, I asked again, but any of butters that, now that you've heard more information, would you like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you could introduce yourself, give us your name and address and some comments, please.
Thank you. Jody Balkis, 41 Rockland Road. I live two houses from the entrance. And I was at the December meeting, and Ms. Roach's comment was, she was a hard stop on the trucks from 9 to 5. And I know that there was discussions about different trucks, Arbor's trucks. And first of all, I work from home, so I see the trucks all day. I've really never seen a truck with Arbor Recycling on it. Maybe there's a little thing on the side, panels with most of them. They're just older trucks. A lot of them are graffiti. Some of them are, you know, big box, white trucks that are just totally blank. So again, I don't know how we would discern what trucks are coming in or leaving at 7, coming in after 5, after 6. I mean, there have been a few, not a lot, but there have been a few coming in a little after 6. But I'm just going to put that out there. But as far as the 9 to 5, I think if we're going to be saddled with these trucks coming and going all day, I think out of respect and to be a good neighbor, they should be limited to the 9 to 5. Because 7 to 9 in the morning, I work from home, I see the traffic all day, I see kids walking to school, not right now because of the sidewalks. But 7 to 9 is really a busy time on Rockland Road, and these trucks can hinder the traffic. And I think 9 to 5 is more when people are already gone and out of their homes. They've left before 9. Most people leave by 7:30, 8 o'clock is when it's busiest. So I just think that it should be staying to the 9 to 5 that Ms. Roach had conditioned for back in December.
And I appreciate that, ma'am. Oh, do you want to, do you want to address that?
I just want to ask a question. Is there a sidewalk on, I know there's not one on the side of where Arbor Recycling is, but on the opposite side?
Yes, there is.
Just because we're talking about the school, so I just want to --
Yes, there is. There, there's quite a few kids walk home from --
To the top of the street, there is a sidewalk on the opposite side of the road, right? Okay. I just wanted to, since we're talking about schools, kids walking.
There are quite a few kids that do walk.
Are there a lot of walkers in that neighborhood? How far is that school?
It's within two miles, I think, a mile. It's from --
I just don't recall, I mean, I lived right down here, and we didn't have a lot of wa -- I'm not, I know this was elementary school, but we didn't have a lot of walkers, and most parents are drop-offs, so they're bus riders. I see 50 cars lined up, but I don't see too many kids walk.
I mean, there's probably more of that walk home than walk to school. But the traffic is more in the morning, the early morning hours from 9 to 5. I mean, from 7 to 9 than there is 9 to 5. You know, 7 to 9 is where you have the people leaving for work, the school buses coming through. So just wanted to make that point.
And I think we have to understand, too, and I want to make sure that everybody understands this, that we're here negotiating to prevent legal action, and we're not concerned about being financially held responsible, because that's not what this lawsuit is about. What it is, is about being able to negotiate with them and getting some fair and equitable balance for the neighbors. Because if they go to the courthouse with the variance that we've discussed at length with this situation, the judge is going to overrule us completely, and then there will be no restrictions. They'll be able to do whatever they want. And I'm just being honest with you. So I need you, hopefully, people to understand that what we're trying to do here is negotiate for the best interest of every, all parties concerned.
I understand.
If they go to court, you're going to have trucks driving by your house at 6 o'clock in the morning.
I mean, I understand. I know you're backed into a corner because we have a term, you know, that back in October said the word "sues," and I get it. You're backed into a corner, but, you know, they want to be a good neighbor, their sign even says it, you know, be respectful of our neighbors. And I think being respectful is not, is the trust being required to be come from 9 to 5, which I think is less, you know, intrusive of the neighborhood, that it's 7 o'clock in the morning in the summer and the spring when our windows are open, and we have to listen to 18-wheelers coming up and down the street. They're a little better at 9 o'clock than they are at 7:00 in the morning.
Understood.
Thank you.
I know it's frustrating, I really do. And I wish, believe me, I think anybody in this board and even in the room that could tell you, if it wasn't for this variance, we would be in a very much, a very different situation. But this is a 50-something-year-old mistake that we're going to have for the next 50 years.
I know, I know. I know. I mean, we're stuck with it, and we have to suck it up as residents, but I think as, you know, the business, then they're going to have to suck it up and, you know, run their business from 9 to 5, at least the truck part of it anyways, so.
Understood.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Go right ahead, please. Name, address. I know people, this is one that I want you to understand something, too. We are a government for the people, by the people. This is the most important part of our process. I am not interested in, every other process is behind public comment, as far as I'm concerned. We all have a right to speak. Anytime I run a meeting, this is the most important one.
Not sure what happened to this, but it's gone.
Booby trap.
I know. All right. Tim Daly, 25 Rockland Road. We've been here before. We don't like them being there any more than anybody else. They don't like being there any more than anybody else. But I think that, and I agree with the neighbor, but, I don't know, we just feel, I just feel that it's better, it's better for us to have control over what is going on on the road than just saying, okay, here you go, do whatever you want. We've been up there a few times, we've talked, we've talked about the neighbors. If we have any comments, questions, I feel very comfortable in walking up to the warehouse and saying, this happened today, we don't like it, can you fix it? And they've been, you know, I mean, they have stuff going on right now in the warehouse, that they're telling us that it'll change the truck traffic on the road. Until it's up and running, we don't know if that's true, false. I mean, we have to take him at his word. Coming out of the driveway is probably not going to help the closest neighbor further up the road. But I, but we as up-the-road neighbors think that, is it better to negotiate and get some of the things that we might want to change, rather than get nothing and have just go, okay, here it is, take it or leave it? That's really not how we want to do it. So I think we're in, we disagree, but we kind of have to agree that is it better for us to get some wins? They've been pretty good about sending trucks different ways on the street. And they've had done different things. But I think that if we have an issue in the neighborhood, we walk up, we call. I've talked to Kevin, Kevin's called my house, saying, hey, you know, how are things going? What's going on? We had an issue with the net on the glass truck. We brought it up. He said it was broken, they're getting it fixed. So we have to take him at his word. But I just think that, you know, do any of us like this? No. But they were kind of, you know, forced into, here's the variance from 1969, take it or leave it. We don't really want that, we don't want that. I'd like to be able to at least have some control. And I know, I understand that, you know, living two houses from the road can't be easy. But if you have any issues, then maybe come see me, maybe come up to the house. Maybe we can walk up and see the building. I think once the next baler gets installed, we've been told that the truck traffic will go down. We don't know that, that's what we're told, and we can have to just believe them. All right, so that's kind of where we're coming from. I think you have been very patient with this whole process, because you know none of us like it. But, I don't know, I'd rather get some wins than no wins at all.
And I appreciate your time, and honestly, you've shown up to the meeting so far and had constructive comments to say, and I'm sure the applicant also appreciates that as well. This is just one of those situations that where nobody, it's a no-win, nobody's happy about it, and we have to do the best we can to make it work.
And I think...
You know, it is what it is.
And through Ms. Roach from the other meeting, it's a mistake, it wasn't a big deal. I don't think we should be going to court and have all the fees, and I don't know enough about your business to know whether we can do that or not. If we can, great. It saves everybody.
Sorry.
No, no, it just, it saves everybody. So, all right, that's all I have to say.
And I think it's important to understand too, from my personal experience, okay? So I was in the Marine Corps for eight years, I was a diesel mechanic, I ran diesel garages. I've had eighty-five, ninety-five pieces of rolling stock that I was responsible for. I've worked on a lot of different diesel vehicles. I actually was a driver instructor at one point. And I know that you can tell them to drive quietly through a neighborhood, you don't have to accelerate aggressively. You can make a truck run quiet, you can make a truck run loud and aggressive. So as long as the drivers understand, you're in a neighborhood, you're going to be quiet, you're going to respect the neighbors, I think that's all part of it. We can probably condition to make sure that all the trucks are properly labeled. Generally speaking, Mass. general law, especially when it comes to commercial vehicles, they already are required to have all those documentation and, you know, clearly marked. But we can make sure that they are, we can condition that. And it seems like they want to be good neighbors, and they will do it as well. So, one more time around the horn. Vice Chairman, you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to wait and reserve some of my comments, but I'll split them, because I think it would be fair to share a couple of my thoughts while the applicant has an opportunity if he wants to weigh into them. So, a couple of things. It's been asserted that we may not have the authority to limit hours of operation. And I don't align with that. We have limited the hours of operation in other businesses and conditioned it without concern. And so, I won't pretend to be a practicing attorney, but I fully believe that this board does in fact have the authority to limit, based on conditioning, the hours of operation. With regard to, there's been a lot of comment on which trucks get to come at what times. And I remember in a previous hearing questioning the applicant directly about the control of that, and how that can be controlled. And, you know, for me, a business of this type, and I'm not in this business, so I'm certainly not speaking from expertise. But a business of this type has, you know, controllables and uncontrollables. So you may put controls on scheduling of your private trucks versus vendor trucks. But as far as being able to control that, I think that's a hard sell, respectfully. You can't control road conditions, accidents, delays, breakdowns. And you also can't control, from a vendor perspective, my view, a vendor that's sitting there, waiting for his time in the slot. That's going to get jammed up from time to time, because it just, common sense tells you that that nature of that business, as much as you can control, you'd be hard-pressed to say that that's going to run like clockwork. And so I think the control factor is a concern for that. Ms. Chairman, and I'll end on this for these comments, if I may, and again, I invite the applicant to challenge or defend. But with regard to why we're here for this hearing, I have a great deal of empathy. And I opened up the first, well, you opened it up, Ms. Chairman, but the, we opened up the first hearing, and in questioning a previous attorney that was before us, I believe it was Mr. Broder, of why was this applicant coming before us? Because there was clearly a variance in place for this property. And with no ill-will or ill-intent, this applicant purchased it, moved in, and certainly has a right to operate in there, based on that variance. So why were we even here? Right, because of the elements of the variance. The variance covers the operation inside that building. And I don't think anyone challenges your right to operate with inside that building. And not in our purview, and we took a lot of time around this, not in our purview is what happens outside that building. You certainly have a right to enter and access that property. But this spilled over into the conversation of, because of the nature of the business, it's a significant detriment to the neighborhood because of the nature of this business and that trucking. And that's why we've had the follow-up conversations. And I would remind my fellow board members that, within the variance language, and with respect, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that I land specifically on the fact that this lawsuit is predetermined outcome. Because in that variance, there is specific language that speaks to the detriment of the neighborhood. And the operation that this business conducts absolutely affects that. That's why we've been having countless conversations about what happens with the trucks. Not what happens inside that building, but what happens with the trucks. Because that's the detriment to the neighborhood, which the variance does in fact have specific language that speaks to that in a challenge. So I'll end on that, and again, I wanted to do this in an open comment, because I appreciate the comments of it is the most important part with public hearing. If the applicant has any thoughts on that. But that's where I land on these. I do, in summary, believe that we have the purview to limit hours of operation. I think the hours of operation, based on the trucking schedule and the sheer lack of control precisely of how that scheduling takes place, is what's problematic here. And I think that the core of the variance does in fact have a risk involved to the detriment of the neighborhood, which puts it in jeopardy. Thank you.
Well spoken, well said, thank you very much. Mr. Cussy? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bush, over there.
I don't have anything to add.
Ryan, even though you're not voting?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Your legal expertise is always appreciated.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant. So Mr. Mayor had mentioned you have zero control, but if I remember correctly, at one of the earlier hearings, you had said that if a truck that's scheduled for the nine-to-five slot shows up at 5:15, you would turn them away, or if a company truck shows up at 6:05, you would turn them away. That's correct, right?
What I'd like to do, Mr. Kelly is here, I think maybe he can respond appropriately to that. Thank you.
The answer to that is yes. Two sets of vehicles, the ones that we send out to pick up the recycled product, and then by Massachusetts law, recycling centers must deliver to us. By Massachusetts law, we have to accept within twenty-four hours. But when they come is totally in our control. If we wanted to schedule every delivery at 12:01 in the afternoon, we could. And that's within Massachusetts law. So the other part is the answer is, every vehicle has to have our name on it, it has to have our DOT number on it, it has to have our federal motor carrier number on it. So if it's our vehicle, it says Arbor Recycling. Not just our tractor or our box truck, also our trailers, that is by law. So there's no way around it. So there's no question who owns the vehicle. Same thing, if it doesn't say Arbor on it, it's not ours. It's as simple as that. It can be, you know, Joe's Recycling Center. It's going to say Joe's Recycling Center, it's not going to say Arbor. So the identification of that is very clear. And also, and in that, I don't really agree with your comment about it's not controllable, because it is. If we have a redemption center that comes without, outside the hours that we are now doing in the nine-to-five, they get turned away. The gates are locked, they can't come in. Right? If a guy abuses, we tell him your schedule for ten o'clock, and he comes at three in the afternoon, next time around, he's not going to get an appointment. That suits what he wants to do. We have absolute control on that. Sending our trucks out, the reason why we tried to split the two was initially is that the neighbors had said to us that nine, seven to nine, had a lot of trucks coming in and out of the property. So we, in conversation with several of the neighbors, said, what if we can take the delivery vehicles and push them into a different time slot? So that the only guys that are going out are our guys. Now, I appreciate the business, and I know it's your version of it, but we are required to cover the entire state of Massachusetts. Whether we're going to the end of the Cape, or all the way up to Great Barrington. So a lot of our guys are leaving, we would prefer, right? And our other operations in both Connecticut and in New York, these guys are leaving at six in the morning. They're not leaving at seven. That was, again, an accommodation that we had in conversation with the neighbors is, I appreciate, I wouldn't want a truck driving by my house at 6:00 AM in the morning either. But if these guys aren't on the road at seven, the problem is it then backs them up, and now they're coming in at eight, nine at night. To accommodate that, again, in conversation with the neighbors, we said, well, let's cut it off at six o'clock. If a guy can't get back on time, right, that we can't control. Can't control weather, can't control traffic, can't control breakdowns. But we can tell our own drivers, if you're not back by six on your route, you do not come to the property, you go park at our auto repair place, our truck repair place, which is in Worcester. Now, they can only handle a few trucks, they can't handle the entire fleet. But that has also been working with our neighbors and our control. So we do have a lot of control, never have perfect control, but we do have a lot of control. And I just think we should have kind of added that. Also, just as a note, going back to the very beginning of how we even got started here, was when we did the zoning determination, I believe it's called, recycling was not in your town's description of what's industrial. And that's what started all of this, saying, well, recycling's not listed, so you have to come get for a special permit and the like. But recycling's really just light industrial, comes in and comes out, it's warehousing. That's what started it. And then from there, it grew into a whole, long conversation about trucks and traffic. But the reason we came here in the beginning was because we were told by the town that because recycling was not defined in the town language of what constitutes light industrial work, that we had to come for this special use permit. I'm actually glad we did, because it has caused us to communicate with our neighbors. If it wasn't that, I would be running 6:00 AM, and I would be running to probably nine, ten o'clock at night. You know, but we've realized we can work, I can cut hours, my hours go up, my overtime goes up, restricts what I can do, and that's something that we're doing to be good neighbors. So, that answers your question. It's a long answer, but it answered some of the other things that came up during the meeting.
That's okay, that's what we're here for.
That was my only question.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Hearing on seeing none, do I have a motion to close the? Ah, yes, sir, last call, go ahead. Yes, sir, if you give us your name and address, please. You've got to go up to the microphone, please, sir.
John Capewano, Two Rice Road, Auburn, Mass. I'm an abutter of this property on Rockland Road. First of all, was there a letter that was sent out about tonight, a meeting? Yes.
Okay, abutters letters were sent out for this? Okay, thank you, yes, they were.
I didn't get one, and I'm an abutter. And when it was first brought up, six months ago, someone said in the meeting here that all the abutters were informed. I didn't get a letter then either, and I am an abutter. So I don't know how that works out legally if the abutters didn't get a notification.
I would just refer to the town if we can verify that at some point. I don't have that.
So you can check.
There usually is a list of abutters that we receive mail, so...
There is a list, it's a three-hundred-foot radius. If you're not within that radius, you won't be getting a letter. I don't know who, offhand, was notified, but we have that.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that.
Through the chair, could I just, did you say Rice Road? That's nowhere near this neighborhood.
I own land on Rockland Road, which is an abutter to this property.
Okay, do you live in that house on Rockland Road?
No house on that property.
Just land?
Just land.
Okay.
There may be a house, but there isn't a house now. So I wasn't informed, and I didn't get informed until 5:30 this evening, when I got a phone call, I listened to my answering machine, that there was a meeting. So I'm not prepared to talk about this, and didn't even know about it. And I should have been prepared with a letter.
Okay.
So I don't know how that works out. So I think there's an issue there.
Is there any chance that we could verify that while we're going over the rest of these? Thank you very much. And we have two, ma'am, you said you also did not receive one, is that correct? Hold on, I'm sorry, I apologize, but I just need you to, for the record, if you can go back up here, please.
Am I all done?
No, you're not, I'm just going to, while you're doing your, I just want to make sure she gets her comments in.
Jody Balkis, 41 Rockland Road. I didn't know, I received no letter. The last letter I got was from Ashley Fletcher Tilton.
Okay.
About that.
That's all you need to go, I have the comments on you.
But I had gotten a message today from a Mr. Rafferty, I think his name was. And he said he's a political activist in the town, and he knew that I had attended the December meeting and had some concerns, and he wanted to make me aware that there was a meeting tonight. So I went on to the Auburn Town website and saw that it was tonight at six o'clock, so...
Okay, so I have the abutters list here, and I have one circled here. Capewano, John J., Capewano, Elizabeth A., Two Rice Road, Auburn, Mass., 01501. And David Balkis I have here.
Yeah, we never got the letter.
David Balkis, Jody Balkis, 41 Rockland Road, Auburn, Mass., 01501, that's you? And I have the abutters list right here that demonstrates from the town side that you received a letter, or you had a letter mailed to you. Whether or not you received it, I don't know that.
Yeah, I honestly did not receive it. The last I got was from...
So, but based on this information, that does not negate whether or not you say you received it or not. This is this. If you're not involved with Rockland Road, we're not going to have any comments on Rockland Road. Just want to let you know about that. Are you an abutter of Rockland Road?
I am not.
Okay, have a seat.
But I just want to say that the mail over there has been...
We're not, I'm not here to discuss the federal government, I'm not worried about mail. I'm not going to talk about what Donald Trump's doing to the mail right now, it's none of my business. It's all good. If they, if it's on this list, it's recognized legally that they received the notification.
Go ahead.
You can go ahead, sir, please, continue.
So, I don't know what the restrictions are that you're talking about tonight.
Well, you wouldn't have known what the restrictions are till you came to the meeting. If you were, so it's saying that you were notified, the restrictions are the same they are, we've discussed before.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Nine to five for the non-Arbor recycling trucks. That was outstanding, that's not going to change. That was already put into the conditions of the permit, should the board make, choose to make those modifications. The next one would be just allowing their trucks to leave at 7:00 AM and not exceed at, I think it's 5:00 PM. So they cover a majority of the state. They're leaving at 7:00 AM to go as far as the applicant said, Great Barrington, Greenfield, Deerfield, Springfield, Dennis, down Cape Cod, and then they want to come back. So that's why they're actually just a one-way exit out of the neighborhood, is what they're referring to.
I got it, I got it.
I understand, but I think it's just, we want to make sure that that's what it's referring to. If, again, this is legal opinion from our town council, who has consulted with Fletcher Tilton, and they look at the likelihood of how these things will roll out in court, and they are confident in saying that we are in our best legal position to renegotiate this scenario for the best interest of the abutters. Because if it goes to court, it's very likely that they will, it's not possible, it's not probable, it is a slightly greater-than-fifty percent chance that this will be negated, and they will have no control over it. So that's what we're trying to hear. We're not, we're here as representative of the community and the town to try to get the best situation for everyone here. It's not an easy task, clearly, because we've been trying to do this one for months now.
I understand, I understand. But just backing up a little bit, just backing up a little bit. The town has allowed a trash company to move into a residential area. And now they're allowing them to expand the trash company in that residential area.
So fifty-five years ago, the town issued a variance. Variances are incredibly legally strong standing in Massachusetts. We are here because of that fifty-five, fifty-six-year-old issued variance. We wouldn't even be having this discussion today if that variance did not exist. This is old-school town politics that is coming back to bite us in the butt from sixty years ago, quite frankly. It really is.
So, this evening, you're discussing traffic flow?
What we're discussing here this evening is determining if we are going to alter the conditions of an existing permit, or we are going to allow the applicant to go to the legal route and make that recourse of action legally binding through the court system. Those are our two options tonight. We can either deny, well, there's three. We can deny this application for readjusting this permit. We can readjust the permit, make the required conditions that were being asked of. Or we can let it go to court. Either way, two of those scenarios, either denying the permit or letting it go to court, results in court. The alternative we have is to do the best we can to negotiate with what we have in front of us and improve it as best as we can. And if that doesn't work, and if the board sees fit to not have that take place, then it moves on to the legal process. But I will, one more thing, I'm sorry. They will be allowed, based on the current descriptions of that building, they will be allowed to operate, and it won't stop them from operating from now until they go to court. I think that's a, am I saying that correctly, my legal people on the board here? So they will still be allowed to continue to operate, correct?
Yes, under the original special permit.
Why can't you just do whatever you want?
Well, that's what's on the table tonight, is the hours was agreed upon between the members of the neighborhood with the owners of the business. And, you know, and in, you know, discussion with them, you know, the amount of trucks that they have and moving them, we're not talking like 50 or 80 trucks pulling out of there at 7:00 in the morning. You know, I believe you have how many trucks go out in the morning?
We own 18 out of 11.
And how many wouldn't be leaving at 7:00 in the morning?
Oh, well, between 7:00 and 9:00, about half of them.
All right. So just for the record, I just wanna be clear, because the applicant is not speaking at the podium, and that's okay, because we have a lot of open discussion right now. He's saying that they have 18 vehicles. They leave between 7:00 and 9:00, and only half of them would be leaving between 7:00 and 9:00. So that's gonna break that down to nine vehicles. Just wanna make sure that we're all clear here, okay? No, go ahead. I apologize.
So if you leave at 7:00 in the morning, the trucks are running at 6:30, warming up in that yard. So they may be running at 6:30 in the morning, or they may be running a half hour after they get back, or whatever.
I can stop my truck at 2:00 in the morning, let it run till 6:00 AM, and my neighbors can't say a word to me.
Got it.
I mean, you can just say...
I got it.
I can stop my lawnmower at midnight.
I got it. But we have... This is a residential area.
So do I live in a residential area, and I can still do it?
Yeah. And there are houses all around the back of their property that are very close.
And I'm assuming that they either bought that house at the time, knowing that there was a building there that was for industrial use, or they moved in sometime after it was built and saw it when they bought the house. I'm just guessing. Anybody else in this... Did anybody just buy it recently and not see it? Did they buy the house and not see the building there when they moved in? Anyone? Anyone? Nope.
Thank you for your time.
I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to... I'm trying to put everything in perspective here. The building has been existing there for 60 years. Everybody has seen it. Just because it remained quiet for some period of time does not mean it was gonna remain quiet that way forever.
Jody Balkis, 41 Rockland Road. I'll be quick. Just two things. So if not... I understand you have a list that says letters were sent out, but if I didn't receive it, if my next-door neighbor didn't receive, if this gentleman didn't receive it, can't this be extended?
You're here now.
Well, I know, but if other abutters didn't know about it, I mean, would the abutters...
Again, legally speaking, this abutters' list that I have, that has your name and that gentleman's name on it, stands firm that says you received the letter. If those three people didn't receive the letter, I would suggest you go to the post office and sign a complaint there, because it sounds like if three people didn't receive the same letter on the same street, that's a postal issue, not a town issue, at least as I can see, because they, generally speaking, take these lists, and they check them off as they inspect the envelopes for name and addresses.
And I just wanna make one last comment. I made this at the last meeting in December, and you were just commenting about not knowing about the warehouse and whatever. And I understand that. And yes, I bought my house 34 years ago, and I guess it was up there. But the point that I made back in December was, I've been at my house... in my house for 34 years. And I could not even tell you what the other businesses that lived... that were there. I think one was a tire company. They had like those oversized pickup trucks bringing tires. So it wasn't a nuisance to the neighborhood. It wasn't... You know, it was in harmony with the neighborhood, which is what especially... specifically stated in your 8.2.2. So I just wanna make that clear. And I understand that you keep... You know, and I know at the last meeting, a big focus was what goes on in that warehouse. And I understand that the build... That's a main part of the focus, but nothing goes on in that warehouse without 18-wheelers and huge, oversized box trucks coming up and down the road. And I know that's a moot point. They got this special variance, whatever. But I really think it should really be addressed as to the specific times that those trucks should be coming in and out. And I think from 9:00 to 5:00 is a basic workday, and a lot of people aren't home. Luckily, I have the privilege of working from home now. But from 7:00 to 9:00, you know, even if it's nine trucks coming out, they're loud. When they... And we're right at the bottom of two hills. They have to accelerate to get up that hill. So it's loud. And from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, in the summer, when it's nice and the birds are singing, and you gotta listen to 18-wheelers, I don't care if it's one 18-wheeler, or it's annoying. And I just think that should really be taken into consideration. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Understood. Thank you very much for your time. All right. So I'm gonna make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. Public portion of the meeting is now closed. There will be no more public comment regarding this hearing. To you, Mr. Maron, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't nearly be as verbose as I made you sit through.
That's okay.
A little earlier. But I do have one of the things... I started down the road, and I got distracted, but one of the things that I neglected to say to the applicant directly during the last diatribe was, I have a great deal of empathy for this applicant and what he's gone through. I think that he's been very thoughtful in his approach, both to us and to the neighbors. And although he made a comment tonight that there are portions of this process that he's thankful for, based on what it's revealed and how he's worked through this with the neighbors, I have a great deal of empathy in that he's had to do this, that he's had to take this time, not just move in what was expected, to move into the business and operate. But I stand firm on two points. They're asking for... I'll call it relief, but they're asking for a modification of the conditions. The hours of operation were something that I think that during our last discussion, we agreed was in the best interest of the neighbors, based on how this was affecting that neighborhood. I do think that we have the ability, in our purview, to limit that. And the other point, although I did listen to him intently when he described the control that he has on the traffic flow, the first time a truck shows up that's not permitted to come in, whether it's labeled another vendor or whatnot, that truck's already there. It's already done the intrusive damage of being in the neighborhood, and it's already there. So it gets turned away, and that one doesn't come back. But there's still a lack of control of the next truck that does the same thing. So, I mean, I... With respect, I question the enormity of the control, the actual scope of control that they can have on a business like this with the entry and exit of the trucks. And that's really what we're talking about, is what it's doing to the neighborhood. And, you know, from a neighborhood perspective, I mean, colleague that I greatly respect, I mean, it's clearly here. I mean, and, you know, in concert with the neighborhood, in harmony with the neighborhood, is a consideration for the variance that they've been awarded. Not awarded, but that they operate under. And that's a significant consideration. So there are, as suggested, I mean, I have no concerns on, I think, two of the pieces of relief that they wanted in the conditions. One, the last one, we were binding it to Mr....
Oh, just because there was a person's name from a different application that was inserted into it, we're just gonna...
Yeah, I didn't even get that.
What is adding that?
Yeah, thanks. Because that afforded me not to have to ask what the heck that was. Because I didn't know where it came from. Right. So that certainly... And then the amending of the operation of the crushing inside the facility and that. And I think that that's... I think that that's a gesture on their part. So I have no concerns about that. But I, for one, do stand firm on the hours. I think that there's a lack of control... A basic lack of control on all the elements that'll matter. And I know that that's presumptive of me not being in this business to suggest that they can't control that piece of the business. That would... It would be inappropriate for me to suggest that. I'm just saying it from a common sense perspective, that there are elements of that to and from with trucks that I think it's intangible. I don't think you can control in the best efforts. Things are going to happen. And with that lack of control, that's the biggest impact of this neighborhood.
Okay. And I would... I'm only gonna just speak as the devil's advocate, so to speak, for a minute, as somebody who has worked in that industry.
Please challenge.
Dispatchers and people that control route and different things like that do have that kind of control. Is a truck gonna blow a tire out on the highway and get towed back in at 9:00 at night? Well, I mean, that's gonna happen to anybody. Could happen to me and you. But generally speaking, dispatchers who control truck flow, traffic in and out, particularly when you're talking about even... Just give an example of a much larger warehouse operation that might manage food or something else. They are strict by the numbers, because that's how they make their money. You gotta get in, you gotta get out. We're not messing around with you. Because the more time that is delegated and left behind, the more profit and loss varies.
Yeah, their margin... Their margin trends.
They want in and out, pretty much.
Understood. Fair point.
So, you know, I do get that. And I've worked in not that industry, but one that would manage a fleet of vehicles. And I understand the importance of that. And that really does come down to a good manager. I understand that. So, you know, there are variables, like you said. Mr. Cussy, sir?
Yeah, I just... I denied the whole project. So obviously, I disagree with changing anything.
Sure. Understood. I appreciate that. Ms. Bush, to you, ma'am.
I have nothing else to add that hasn't been said.
Ryan, I know you're not voting on this one, but I'd like your opinion, please, sir.
Yeah, I just... I wanna push back on Mr. Maron's point a little bit, where he was mentioning it is in our purview to have the hours of 9:00 to 5:00. It is entirely within our purview. But the problem is, the variance says... And I'm paraphrasing, since I don't have it in front of me. It's in my trunk from like three meetings ago.
Me, too.
But it's light manufacturing, provided it's not a nuisance in the neighborhood. And we just got on the record that the change is nine trucks in two hours. We're doing the work for them right now, where we just got on the record something that really isn't a nuisance. It comes out to, what, a truck every 15 minutes is gonna be leaving between 7:00 and 9:00 extra? So I think that we don't have enough to support a nuisance finding, at least with the extra hours.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may. I love these.
I love the challenge. And I have a great deal of respect for my colleagues. And I just wanna, before I make just a brief comment on it, and so I think I'll take it in reverse. So to your challenge on the nuisance, I think it's subjective.
It entirely is.
But what I really wanna land on is the beginning of your comments, in that you were saying I was right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's all I have.
No, thank you. Ms. Roach, to you, ma'am.
So I think I disagree with Mr. Maron in that I feel that... Obviously, the crushed glass and Mr. Lemansky aside, because those are not the hot topics here. It's obviously the hours that's the hot ticket item on this. I do feel that us agreeing to amend and putting some parameters on this, keeping some parameters on this, I think, overall, is better for, let's say, a majority of the neighborhood. Obviously, we know everybody doesn't agree. Everybody isn't on board that we never have that. But so far, I think this applicant has showed that every concern, other than, hey, we don't want you here, which is not a possibility, every concern that has been brought to him has been met with discussions. There was... They came and asked to meet with the neighbors. I think that I sue people for a living, so I don't care about the lawsuit. I don't care about that. I think that if they do bring a lawsuit, whether we win or lose, if they get the order that they can do what they want, that is... There is not gonna be restrictions on the hours, anything. So then, why would the applicant then tell a truck that gets back at 7:00 at night, go to our tow lot? Go to our... It'd be crazy to do that. I think that adding the additional hours that they're asking for, allowing the nine trucks to leave-ish per every two hours, again, I don't think it's great. I don't think... I agree with Mr. Cussy that there... You know, there are walkers. I think there is a sidewalk. Most of the kids that would be walking from there are definitely high school students, hopefully there. This location sucks. It's awful. I totally get it. But I think that because of some of the opposition, I don't wanna say no to this and have the end result be worse for all of the neighbors who have diligently worked with these applicants and who have come to everything and who have met with them and who have talked to them and see them get nothing. So for me, I probably am gonna be willing to amend, and my reason is the neighbors. Yours may be not because of the neighbors, but mine is going to be yes because of the neighbors. I don't love any of it, but I think that allowing them to spread it out a little bit more, according to what we've heard tonight and how that can change some of the trucks leaving, I think that helps with the traffic flow and having those extra hours, I think, is probably a good idea. But yeah, I mean, do we all wish this was a playground? Yeah, sure. It'd be great. But that's not the position that we're in.
I honestly, I think you've heard from me enough tonight, and I think I echo Ms. Roach's sentiments, is that I think we are in the best position to negotiate rather than lose all. So that's just my opinion. So I'm not gonna share any more of that. Do we wanna go around one more time? Do we wanna have a motion? I'm not seeing anybody jumping on it.
I'll make a motion.
All right. So I have a motion on the floor. Go ahead.
I mean, I was the one who put the condition in the first place, so rightfully so. Is this the 605? Yeah.
We're still at 605.
6:05? Oof, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion on the 6:05 applicant Arbor Recycling, Inc., requesting to amend a special permit under 8.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for warehouse located at 47 and 49 Rockland Road, Auburn, Mass., map 17, parcel 177 and 224. To amend, do you want me to read them?
If you would like, but I, so it would be altering the truck traffic for Arbor Recycling's vehicles specifically from seven to, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 AM. Oh, go ahead, you got them?
Yep, so to state that the trucks can operate that are owned by Arbor Recycling can operate from seven to six. Trucks not owned by Arbor Recycling can operate between nine and five. To add the condition that the emptying of crushed glass containers shall occur only inside the warehouse facility. And to remove the condition in our former special permit that spoke to Robert Lemansky and spoke to the fact that the special permit was non-transferable, that last condition will be strucken from the new amended special permit.
Correct. So we, the Lemansky comment is their, their permit was non-transferable, not this permit. So that whole, that line just needs to be literally deleted, that's all there is to that. So it's not that complicated on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just to be clear, who is voting on this? It would be the Vice Chair, Maron, Mr. Cussy, Ms. Bush, Ms. Roach, and myself. So with that being said, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair, Maron?
Before I vote, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, when I, when I took this, this role, I, I always stood on voting my conscience, but at times like this, I need to decide between what's practical and the principle. And, and, you know, the principle of this case leans me in one direction, but I, I will respectfully say that I was not wrong, but swayed by Ms. Roach. And so I will vote on principle at this time and, excuse me, I will vote on practical this time and not the principle. And I will, I will vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Cussy, sir?
I deny.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, so I believe that this particular-
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bush?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I thought, I thought you said second, but I will-
Oh, she did second, yeah.
I apologize.
So you're already at you.
So can I have your vote, please, for the record, ma'am?
I approve.
Thank you. So, and I appreciate that, thank you. It appears as though we have settled this particular matter for now. So with that being said, I'm going to ask to reopen the public portion of the hearing in order to close it. I know that sounds silly, but that's what we have to do.
Mr. Chairman, reopen, uh, motion to reopen the public portion of the hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, folks, so you've heard what went on here tonight? 6:05 PM applicant Arbor Recycling requesting to amend a special permit. Those amendments have been approved. We wish that you will have continued open dialogue. We hope that that will continue. We apologize for those who are not satisfied with it. We do our best with what we can. So thank you very much and have a great evening on that one.
Motion to close.
Uh, just for the record, Mr. Rafferty just wanted to let me know that I suck, so thank you very much. All right, motion to close?
Motion to close this hand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the 6:10 PM applicant. All right. We're going to let everybody have a minute, take a stretch. Could I have a, could I request a five-minute recess?
Mr. Chairman, a five-minute recess, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, we are in a five-minute recess. Act TV, are we live? Thank you very much. Okay, we are returning and the meeting is resuming. We have the 6:10 PM applicant, 16 Perry Place LLC, requesting a comprehensive permit on the Mass. General Law 40B for a housing complex at 16 Perry Place, Auburn, Mass., map 18, parcels 14 and 15. This is continued from 12/19/24, which means that the abutters have already been previously notified and you would not have received any additional notification regarding this hearing. So we have some additional paperwork that we have received today. I'm going to go over it quickly so we can sort it first, and then we're going to get things to the applicant. So the town has received a letter from Lane and Hamer, if I say that correctly, if not, I apologize, Professional Corporation of Law Offices, 101 Main Street, Suite 105, Whitensville, Massachusetts, 01588. And it states that, in, in, the Reader's Digest version, basically, because it is, it is available, that they represent Mr. Largus, Paul Daughtry, Dean and Amy Hazzis, and it states that they have a parcel of land that is owned by the Hazzis family and they do not have interest in granting the right of way for this particular, this particular project. So this does not enter the purview of the zoning board, I just want to be clear of that. As we stated in past meetings, if the abutters, as they obviously have represented, legal representation, they need to pursue this if they want to bring it to court, if they want to go and file a lawsuit, this is not involving the town. However, I think in the interest of making sure that everything is documented, is there any member of the board that would find it useful, or would they like to forward this to the attorney for review, to our town attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that our town attorney would weigh into this as an independent action, as representing the abutters, to take it forward, if they chose to do so.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, I didn't know if you would-
No, no, please, but, and, and maybe, and, and those that are more skilled and credentialed than I may know better, but I don't know that our attorney would, the town attorney would be obligated to take any action on this particular-
No, this would be simply if the board wanted to send it to him for his knowledge. That's, this is not a commitment, this is not an action plan, this is not anything like that, it's just, are we going to send the attorney a copy of this because we received it?
Yeah, okay, yeah, so I would, I would say no, Mr. Chairman, because it, because it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't lend him an action. It would, if, if we're talking about an FYI, not an FYA, he doesn't take any action on it, then I think that, I think that the members that have solicited the help of this particular law firm pursue it in their own right.
Okay. Mr. Cussy, your thoughts?
I'm good, I just, no sense of sending it.
Okay.
No, I agree, I think this is kind of an opinion based on an action that the landowners could take. I don't really think it has any, I mean, I don't think it has any bearing on our role in this particular application, but that, yeah, that's just my, yeah.
Ryan?
I do think that it has a slight bearing on our role, not to the point where we need to give it to town council. I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, there's a couple of cases that suggest where it's a private way to 40B, towns can condition the resolution of that private way action as part of the comprehensive permit. So we might want to keep that in mind and with the abutters asserting their right, just put that condition in, if we do end up granting the comprehensive permit.
Right, good point, thank you very much. Ms. Roach?
No, I mean, I think it's good information, but I don't, I don't think we can deny or really use this in our, what we decide about the special permit. Certainly, the abutters have the right to bring suit or, you know, do whatever they feel is, is the right thing to do, but it's not a reason for us that we can really act on.
Understood, okay. So I think, whoop, go on ahead. Right, correct, that was going to something I was going to bring up, thank you very much. So, all right, so the board is not going to take action on the Lane and Hamer letter, we are going to acknowledge that we received it, however, for the record, it is here. The next question I have, I do fortunately have our consultant, who is via Zoom or whatever, I'm not really sure, whatever the particular method they're using over there, but what we have to discuss this evening is control of the road and easement is something that we need to discuss with the applicant this evening. In addition to all of the requests for waivers that we had received today, and just to be clear, we did just receive these today, I think we received maybe one yesterday, regardless, but we, we have gotten them, so they weren't, it wasn't as if the town did not try to have them prepared as quickly as possible, it was just, it was delayed in receiving it. So they are here now, for the record. Now, just from the town side, I just want to make sure that I covered all of that stuff properly? Thank you.
And through the share, all this will be posted online, if not tomorrow, the next week.
Okay, so they all will be posted online as well this week, I think that's important to point out. So control of the road and easement is something that we have to address, and going over these requests for waivers. So with that being said, if the applicant is finally able to come and speak to us at the microphone, good evening, sir, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
James Benincosta, 16 Perry Place. Ali Khorasani is here tonight as well for, he's the traffic engineer, so I'd like to let him come up and actually speak first, if that's okay.
So if you don't mind, just because we have this particular issue in front of us right now-
Sure.
Can you discuss the control of the road and the easement? Do you have access to the control of the road and the easement of this road?
I mean, it's, to my understanding, yes, that we have, you know, access to the easement to improve and, and use and, and whatnot, but I'm not an attorney and I didn't, you know, so I can't speak to-
Because I think that's very important right now, because from what I understand, there's several cases around the state, not necessarily involving you, but there are other easement issues and there are other private road issues that are in other cases related, and from what I understand, this is one of the things that we, necessary, is that we ensure that we have control of the road and the easement on your part.
Okay.
So at some point, we have, you could possibly bring it up and bring it to the next meeting, however you want to do it.
Yeah, I could do that.
But I think that's an important step-
Yeah.
That we need to make sure that we clarify.
Okay.
Okay. No, that's okay. Thank you. So with that being said, those are the things we want to address, so I'm going to go ahead and, now you can give your presentation on where you want to go, and then we'll look at the board, take it from there.
I'll let Ali Khorasani come up.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. My name is Ali Khorasani, I'm the traffic engineer who did the traffic impact study for this project. It was done in 2022, so a few years old already, and apparently there were a number of comments by the peer reviewing engineers. We have prepared responses and we have submitted to the peer review engineers as well, and and we, we're just waiting to hear if there are any, any additional comments or questions or we could, we could answer here.
Comments, questions from the board members?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the big question is, what did the traffic study say?
The traffic study said that this particular project is not going to generate a significant amount of traffic, and the existing roadways can safely accommodate the additional traffic from this development.
And what was the volume of traffic increase that your study indicated?
All right. Originally, in 2022, when, when I did the traffic study, we used what's called Trip Generation Manual that is put out, published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers at that time, and that was one of the questions the reviewing engineers had, and they felt that that was outdated, the, the newer edition, which is the 11th edition, should be used. So looking at the 11th edition, we are talking about a total of 445 trips, meaning either going to the site or leaving the site, so behalf of that, in terms of number of vehicles, it'll be on a 24-hour basis. And in the morning, during rush hour, we're talking about 43 trips, 43 cars either going to the site or leaving the site. Essentially, 37 will be leaving the site in the morning, most folks go to work, and only six vehicles will be arriving at the site. And then in the evening, during rush hour, again, we're talking about a total of 38 vehicles, or essentially 16 vehicles. About 10 will be leaving the site and 28 vehicles arriving at the site. So that's the number, we're talking about maybe one to two vehicles per hour, I'm sorry, per minute, or, or, or I should say, one vehicle every two minutes, almost. So if a vehicle leaving the site, it'd be two or three minutes before another one, on average, it doesn't always happen that way, sometimes two are leaving at the same time and then another three, four, five minutes later, another two vehicles will be gone. So on average, one vehicle every two minutes or three minutes will be leaving the site, and then about two-thirds of them will be going all the way down to Auburn Street, then one-third will be going down Pearl Street to go to Rockland Street in that direction. So that, that's why I think the, the volume of traffic is not significant, and the roadways don't get a lot of traffic to begin with, so that we don't see any issues, any safety issues or anything like that.
If I can interrupt you, sir, did you, so with the data that you had collected, theoretical as it is, because it's not constructed now and so it's not actual data for cars coming and going, was a survey done of what the actual traffic is now?
Yes.
Was that data collected?
Yes, there was.
And you said that, that-
I can tell you-
How is it gauged right now as far as, I mean, how is that scaled? Is it scaled for light, medium, heavy, or how is the current traffic there scaled?
I, I can tell you presently, the traffic counts, for example, at the intersection of Pearl Street and, rather, Perry Street and Auburn Street, total of seven cars are leaving, 17 cars are leaving in the morning, and of those, one takes a right on Auburn Street and then 16 take a left. And in the afternoon, we're talking about 12 vehicles are arriving at Auburn Street, and three of them take a right, and nine of them take a left, going towards the high school, the mall and such. So the, the volumes aren't really significant, it's even less when you look at Pearl Street and, and Rockland Street. Only five vehicles arrive at Rockland Street in the morning, four take a right and one takes a left, and in the afternoon, five vehicles are arriving, one takes a right and four take a left. So the, the volumes are very, very low.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I, I won't hold it up to the other board members, but I just have one quick follow-up question. In the current traffic study that you did, the actual numbers that you counted, you're looking at Perry, did you take into account the fact that there's an exit for 290 right before it, and what that volume of traffic looks like coming by Perry?
Sure. We looked at the, at the off-ramp, we didn't go to the on-ramp, which is the next one after, which is too far out from this-
On the other side of the bridge?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, I'm talking about the one that's concentrated right in the vicinity, correct?
Yes. And the traffic, in the morning, 373 going straight, 172 vehicles take a right to go Vine Street, and obviously, nobody goes left because that's an off-ramp. And in the afternoon, 318 go straight through, and 243 take a right to Vine Street, and again, nobody goes left.
And would you agree that that's heavy? I mean, if we were just going to put a light, medium, heavy, would you agree that that's a heavy congested area?
No, it's not a heavy, that, that's probably a medium. The reason I can say is, we have conducted a traffic analysis, a capacity analysis and a level of service analysis. The level of service for, for that particular intersection is either A, B, or C, and level of service is, is a phrase used to quantify the flow of traffic through an intersection. And they usually, just like a, a school report card, they give a level of service of A all the way through F, where A, B, C, D, and D is usually acceptable during rush hours, and sometimes even E is acceptable, but F, and then that, that's a problem when people have to wait at the light a minute, maybe one or two or three cycles. But in this case here, we don't have even E or D, there are either B, C, or A at every different approach. So if you, whether you're going southbound, northbound, or, or, or will be southbound, eastbound, and westbound, they are no worse than C.
Okay, so, so, okay, and I'll, I'll end- So, okay, and I'll end on this, Mr. Chairman. So thank you for that.
Sure.
And I appreciate the clarity on the data specifically. So just for the record, you're suggesting that that bubble intersection where 290 dumps out doesn't even score higher than a C?
It does not.
On record?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mr. Cussey, sir, to you.
Yeah. So 152 apartments, we're coming up with 45 cars in the morning leaving there? Is that what you said?
As I stated earlier, this is based on data that is provided by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That's a standard document that all traffic engineers use to project traffic from all different land uses. And these are based on surveys that have been done nationally over a number of years. And every few years, the document gets updated. As I indicated earlier, the study originally was conducted using the 10th edition of the manual, whereas 11th edition had just come out. So that was an issue that the reviewing engineer had. So we looked at that and it turns out that it generates even less traffic based on the latest survey that has been done. Yeah. Just through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, I was reminded that those numbers are during rush hour, peak time. Now, off-peak, obviously, is going to be a lot less.
So you said this traffic study was done in 2022?
Through the chair again. Yeah, originally was done 2022 when the reviewing engineers reviewed that and they brought that to our attention because the new manual had just come out. So it wasn't available when I first prepared the study. But we have looked at the new standards, the new manual, and the data shows that actually there'll be less traffic coming from this proposed development.
Okay. So was the traffic viewed in 2022 or is this just a computer software system that you're using?
Again, through the chair, this is actually the survey that was done by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So this is the data they prepare and then we look at it and we distribute it to the intersections based on an existing traffic pattern in the area. So if 30% of traffic, let's say for sake of argument, on Rockland Street is going northbound and 70% coming, going southbound, so the traffic will be distributed the same way because that's the pattern of traffic, that's where most people drive in rush hour, either going to work or coming back from work.
Okay. So I'm just trying to clarify where the data comes from, where exactly?
Where the data is coming from?
Stop. The program you're using?
I indicated that the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they survey all different land uses, residential, commercial, industrial, all the time. And then they compile the data and then they come up with the rates for every different land use. There are more than 600 or 700, maybe even 1,000 land uses that they survey and they include it in their manual.
Okay. But was, there was no actual observation from anybody, any person, like visualizing cars during rush hour or anything like that?
The only other way would be to survey an identical land use, an apartment building, probably the same exact size in the same exact location. But there aren't any there to actually make a comparison like that or develop a rate like that. Again, this is a standard traffic engineering practice that's done throughout the United States.
Just for clarification, are you asking, is the question, did he come up with the data for the proposed project?
I'm just wondering.
I guess, because I think there's just a confusion of like.
Right. I'm just wondering where the data, I'm wondering if there was any observation of the traffic at that area at that time or if it was just coming from these projections? Is that?
Are you referring to the traffic that is there today?
In 2022?
Or the projected traffic?
The traffic that was there when the survey was done, the study was done.
Okay. Through the chair again, the traffic that's there, it was recorded.
Okay.
And those were the numbers that I read earlier that, I can read it again. On Pearl Street, for example, at Rockland Road, five vehicles are going westbound. And of those, in the morning, four going north. This is during rush hour again, and one going south. In the afternoon, five vehicles again approach. These are actually recorded in the field.
In 2022?
In 2022, yes.
Okay. That's my question.
Thank you. And actually, I appreciate clarifying those questions because I like to know where the data comes from as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Ryan, to you, sir.
Yeah, I just have two quick questions. So back to collecting the data, it says here you collected it on September 22nd, '22. Do you remember if that was a weekday, what day of the week it was, if possible, or?
The, again, a standard traffic engineer is you do the traffic counts on an average weekday, that is Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Because when you do it on a Monday or on a Friday, there are some abnormal situations. You got either long weekends or people, a holiday or something, they're going down or out to the cave or they're going somewhere. And that, because of that, you avoid unusual situations. So it was done either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Perfect. I just wanted to check.
Excuse me for a second. Can I interrupt you in the beginning first? I apologize.
Yeah, sure.
But I don't want, did you say the date was December 22nd?
No, September 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Which was a Thursday. I just.
All right. Thank you. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
No worries. And then you might not be able to explain this, just could you, do you know what changed in the Institute of Transportation Engineers' data that resulted in such a drastic decrease? Where in daily, we're seeing about 46% of a decrease and at the PM, we're seeing a 42% decrease?
Again, this is based on the trip generation manual that is published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. As I said, every few years, they add more data, more surveying data to their database and then they develop new rates. So it becomes more up-to-date.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense. I just didn't know if there was one thing in particular that changed that data, but?
Nothing I can put my fingers on and I don't believe even COVID-19 has anything to do with it. It's just they survey different land uses, different places, and then they do traffic counting and then they get the information and they compile and then develop the rates that we use in doing a traffic impact study.
Yeah, no, it makes perfect sense. Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I do have a couple of questions, but I would just ask that the chair ask the audience.
Yeah, well, I thought we'd go through this.
To remain quiet until it is their turn to speak is disrespectful to both the board and the applicant through the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know where you were going. I apologize.
To you, sir. Do you feel that, or does the transportation board, do they take into account? I think we'll all agree in 2022, half the people in this room weren't leaving their house to go to work. And now it's 2024.
May 5.
2025, thank you. And most people are leaving their house to go to work. Is that going to be factored into re-projected numbers? I know you said you didn't think COVID affected it, but I would absolutely disagree.
Through the chair again, I'm trying to understand the question. Are you saying that people do not go to work nowadays?
I think they do now. I don't think in 2022 they did.
Okay.
I think now they're returning to work.
Maybe I can talk a little bit about COVID-19. So Mass, Massachusetts Department of Transportation actually put out a directive. So when you, when you do a traffic study like this, that you need to look at the historical traffic data in the area and they actually provide you with the information. And you, you develop, in other words, you increase whatever data you collect to a pre-COVID condition, meaning that if in 2021, we hadn't had any COVID, what the traffic would have been.
Okay.
And we actually did that, even though the traffic city was done in 2022. Mass duty had come out with another directive saying that after March of 2021, you no longer have to do that because they felt that the traffic had leveled off and people had gone back to work. But we did that anyway. We increased the traffic just to be on the safe side. And ever since then, they said you don't need to do the adjustment anymore. And we, like I said, we adjusted the volumes to higher and it turns out because of the COVID, one of the effects have been a lot of employees and their employers have become accustomed to working from home. As such, they don't drive, they don't go on the road again. I'm sure a lot of people probably heard on the news that on the highway, people were going a lot faster because there weren't many cars during COVID. And there were, the accidents were more severe because people were going faster if there weren't many cars on the roads. But it has gone back up. Data shows, that Mass duty data shows, up to 2022 has gradually gone up, but it has since leveled off, meaning that traffic isn't increasing to any above and beyond that level.
Okay. And then is it typical in a traffic study like this? I mean, none of us here are experts on traffic studies. You certainly are. So is it typical to view the traffic only one day? Like when you got that data from that September, what'd you say, 22nd date? Is it, is that a typical operating standard? You go out one day and that's the day? It's not typical to do it for a week or five days in a row?
Through the chair again, yes, it is. That's the standard practice in doing traffic impact study. But what happens is that there are other factors that we use in doing that because we did the traffic study in September, that is what's called seasonal adjustment. So if, let's say, the traffic showed that it was lower than average month of the year and then we will increase that data to make it average month of the year. So there are some other adjustment factors involved and we use that. And again, that's the standard traffic engineering practice.
Okay. And the last question for me is, when you say morning and afternoon, could you just define that time as morning? 5:00 AM, is it 8:00 AM? What time are we talking? And also the same with the afternoon?
The morning peak hour usually happens between 7:00 and 9:00 o'clock in the morning. So we actually survey the traffic for two hours. And then we find the highest 60-minute period, it could be between 7:45 and 8:45, 7:30, 8:30, or 7:00 and 8:00, or 8:00 and 9:00, the highest 60-minute traffic volume is used. In the afternoon, usually between 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock, again, the highest 60-minute traffic volume within those two hours is considered a peak. Usually, the PM peak is the critical peak because it's the higher peak. The reason for that is most people go to work at staggered times because they stop to pick up the paper or get a cup of coffee. So they don't, they're not on the road, major roads at the same time, whereas in the afternoon, everybody leaves work at the same time. And usually, not always, usually the PM peak is the critical peak and then usually only study that peak. But we looked at both peak periods, just in case there were some abnormal conditions in there.
Sorry, I lied. I still have one more. Sorry. So I just want to get back to, because I think, I'm sure that everyone on the board is thinking, how can you be saying that there's 37 cars going to be a result of 152? I'm no math major, but that, to me, seems like that cannot be true. Now, I know you're saying it comes from this data that everybody uses and accepts and all that, but is number of bedrooms taken into account? Is, you know, family size and dynamics, is that all rolled into that? Because I just, I don't see how only 37 cars leave a property where there's 150 apartments. I'm sure everyone in the room is thinking the same thing.
So all I can say about that is that most facilities like the proposed residential development are made of either single bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and so they average that. So no matter which building you go, they have different types of residential units in them. So once they average that, you use the average. I don't believe they break them down with how many of them are a single family. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
You did, yep. Yep. Okay. I don't have anything further.
Thank you. So go ahead, you can answer this, go ahead.
I think maybe one, just confusion, just to clarify. So what are you saying is there's not, it's not that there's 47 cars total that are going to come and go out of the project, it's just during that peak?
That's right.
Yeah, during the peak, yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a question based off that. If that's okay, Mr. Chairman. During the peak 60 minutes or during the peak two-hour timeframe?
Through the chair again, through the peak 60 minutes.
Okay.
One hour.
So 43 cars in 60 minutes?
Yes.
Makes a lot more sense.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
So I just have a couple of, what is the, and I just want to clarify, what is the radius? Is there a circular radius that you say is this, and I'm just hypothetically speaking, you're doing a traffic study? Is this ground zero and there is a two-mile radius, 100 feet radius? Like what is the, what is the scope of the traffic study itself?
So based on my experience, I've been doing this for five decades now. And based on my experience, I look at the streets and intersections that are most likely to be impacted by any project. Now, larger projects, obviously, you got to look at larger areas. And now, some communities actually have bylaws that spells out the threshold that you're talking about. They say you need to look at intersections within, whether it is 100 feet, 500 feet, 600 feet, or 1,000 feet. But there aren't such bylaws in the town of Auburn. Most towns don't have, but some towns do. And that's where the engineering judgment and my knowledge of the area comes into play.
And that is a bylaw, you're saying some towns have a bylaw that say if you do a traffic study, you have to have a certain radius is what you're saying?
Exactly.
Understood, thank you. So my next question is then, does this particular traffic study involve I-290 though?
Only the off-ramp intersection at Vine Street.
Understood.
Yeah, nothing beyond that. As it was determined, there is next to no impact on that intersection, so there's no sense of going any farther.
And I want people to understand too, this gentleman has been, he's required to look at a certain scope. I'm not challenging this person particularly, we're challenging the data, okay? I want to make sure people understand that. This gentleman doesn't just represent this project, he does this all over the place. He's here just answering our questions, all right? So just make sure you understand that too. Because the reason I say that is we have a place down the street called the Port of Worcester. Port of Worcester is one of the largest trucking organizations that take things off of train cars and put them on the trailer trucks. And I can personally speak to getting on 290 by the Mass Pike, driving into Worcester and from the exit you're particularly speaking of, actually, it starts at the Mass Pike and it ends at Holy Cross, and there's 300 trailer trucks in line waiting to get on the Mass Pike. Now, to me, just from a common sense point of view, that seems like a safety issue because you're basically blocking the Hope Ave exit, you're blocking that exit for Vine Street, and it's extending past all the way to Bentley's and then to the Pike. I just feel as though that additional stress in there, regardless of how the outcome is, I understand that, it just seems to me that that should be considered, the fact that we have 200 trailer trucks, 300 trailer trucks, literally in a single or double file line from the Mass Pike to Holy Cross. And that's, I've seen this at a Tuesday at 11:30 in the morning and a Wednesday at 1:00 in the afternoon. So I think that needs to be put into the record, by the way. So.
If I could, if I could.
Yeah, of course you can.
My office happened to be for 24 years overlooking the Port of Worcester you're talking about.
Okay.
Even before they brought from Boston part of the port to Worcester. But when we take a traffic survey of the area, that takes into consideration all kinds of vehicles, including pedestrians or bicycles. If there were trucks, they were reflected in the survey that was done. If there were trucks, they were reflected in the survey that was done in September of 2022, and those were taken into consideration. And I understand your point. Trucks are usually, they take longer to maneuver a turn, they hold the traffic a little bit longer. Those are all taken into consideration when we do the analysis.
Okay, that's perfectly fine. I just want to make sure that that was brought into the record. Before I turn it over to the community, do we have any other comments from the board? Okay, so.
Sorry, I just have one thing, and I'm sorry, maybe I miss it. But originally, on the original traffic study that was done and then sent to peer review, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a comment from our peer review saying that they did want to see 2024 numbers, correct? Was that done? Was a new actual go-out done?
Through the chair again. I think what they had asked was, or they felt that because it was done in 2022, they were unsure that that would really reflect the existing conditions. And they had suggested maybe do a survey if, at one location, a sample, if the traffic is 10% or more higher than what we had originally captured in 2022, and then we need to redo that. But when I look at Massachusetts Department of Transportation has a number of what is called permanent traffic counting stations. And that means the device is there, they count every minute, every hour, every day of the year constantly. And then they develop an annual daily traffic or average daily traffic. So when I checked the, one of the stations, in fact, is on, I believe it's on Auburn Street. And the station showed that from 2022 to 2023, the traffic increased only by 2%. So that's way below the 10% that the reviewing engineers were talking about. We felt that there was no sense of doing, it would be pointless to spend all the effort, the collected data, reanalyze, and come up with the same results or even lower because the new manual says even there's going to be less traffic compared to what we actually looked at with, based on the old manual.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to head and open the hearing up to public comment. I would just ask respectfully for the folks this evening, please, to make sure that you signed in and that we are discussing traffic issues, all right? And we're sticking to traffic issues, please, this evening. So, thank you very much. There was a sign-in sheet right there if you'd like to comment. Sir, your name and address and your comments.
Steven Chambers, 61 Bancroft. So again, there were a lot of numbers thrown out. So if I can just clarify, the existing in 2022 was somewhere around 30 cars exiting those areas? Is that correct? Can I ask?
Yes, no, that's fine, yeah. Could you answer that question, please, sir? I appreciate your going through the chair.
Again, through the chair, the gentleman, we're talking about in the morning, 21 vehicles exiting the site, or the area, I should say. This is traffic that was surveyed out there. And in the afternoon, about 16 or 17 vehicles.
Thank you. Before you continue, sir, I just want to do one thing. If you don't know who this gentleman is, he's on the zoning board. Excuse me, he's on the select board. Excuse me, he's not on our board, what am I talking about? He's been at at least three or four meetings here and he's had public comments. And I want to make sure you understand that. He is a select member who is taking time out of his day to come here and make sure he's representing his constituents. I think that's important to point out, that he's spending time away from his family, he's not involved in this meeting as a selectman, and he's over here taking care of extra business on his time off. So thank you for doing that, sir. I appreciate your time.
And I would just like to clarify, I am here on my own. I'm not here as a representative of the select board. And anything I ask is not representative of that board.
Understood.
And I appreciate what you guys do as well. So with that, I believe I also heard that there was about 450 trips after the development. So going from about 21 cars to 450, and it's not a big deal, just doesn't jive with me. So again, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't understand that aspect. But I wanted to bring it up. That's a significant increase in traffic. So getting back to what your purview is, I want to ask, was there any accident studies about the, and is that extrapolated out? So if we have currently 21 vehicles now and those intersections yield four accidents, can we do, is there a formula? Again, I'm not a traffic person. Is there a formula that says by increasing 450 cars, you can expect 20 more accidents or some sort of data like that? So trying to keep it within that scope and understand that. And I don't know if an accident study was done or if that's allowed. I don't know if that data has to be state-defined or again, what a threshold is because I know there's some fender benders that I don't know if he's reported. But I think the board is very aware of the Vine Street, Auburn Street area and the 290 exit and what that traffic would look like in the future because of all these potential vehicles coming through here. So again, keeping with safety, if there's currently this many accidents, how many accidents could we expect with an increase of flow of 450 trips per day? I'd like to know if that's something that can be answered.
And I think that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. If you could, please, sir?
Sure, I just through the chair. I think there were two questions. One was about the volume of traffic. And the numbers that I gave, I think there's a misunderstanding here. The numbers that I gave, those are for rush hour, one hour in the morning or one hour in the afternoon. And you were talking about a daily traffic. So that doesn't apply here. So you will have to, daily will be whatever traffic is on a daily basis on the rest of the roads. We didn't survey that, but MassDOT, for example, has a survey of traffic on Auburn Street I mentioned earlier. And anywhere from 8,000 to 9,000 cars a day. So if that will give you an idea of what, perspective as to what we're talking about here.
Go ahead.
The second question I think you had was regarding accidents and safety. In fact, the traffic study included a section on safety and accident study. And we looked at that, at the intersections that we studied. And I'm trying to get my data here. So we looked at the intersection of Auburn Street and Vine Street. We looked at the intersection of Auburn Street and Perry Street, intersection of Auburn Street and Rockland Street, and Rockland Street and Pearl Street. See how many accidents happen and what that means in general because number of accidents by themselves don't mean anything. So what happens is Massachusetts Department of Transportation has a procedure and a formula that you calculate number of accidents per million vehicles entering an intersection. So we did that. We looked at the intersections. Just for your information, this was over a four-year period. The total of eight accidents occurred at the intersection of Auburn and Vine Street. And a total of one, two accidents happened at the intersection of Auburn and Perry Street and one accident at the intersection of Auburn and Rockland and no accident at the intersection of Rockland and Pearl Street. Now, to put that in perspective, that the intersection of Auburn and Vine Street, it gives us a rate of 0.29 accidents per million vehicles entering the intersection from all directions. And that is for a signalized intersection, there's a traffic signal there. And for signalized intersections, the average in District 3 of Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Auburn is in District 3, is 0.89. This is almost like one-third of the average in this area. That tells us that safety isn't really an issue here. We looked at the accidents by type, by severity, the time of day they happened, what kind of weather, what type of roadways we had, whether they were wet, snowy, icy. We looked at all of those.
You can't do that. That's okay, we'll give you.
So intersection of Auburn and Perry Street had two accidents. And we have a rate of 0.1 compared to an average of 0.61 for an unsignalized intersection in District 3 of Massachusetts Department of Transportation where Auburn is. And in intersection of Auburn Street and Rockland Street, we have a rate of 0.05, again, compared to 0.61, which is the average in the area for unsignalized intersections. And at Rockland and Pearl, no accidents, so there was zero. So I just want to make sure that we looked at the safety aspect as well for every one of those intersections.
Thank you.
And in addition to that, there weren't any accidents on Perry Street, Pearl Street, or in between the intersections. So if there weren't any accidents in the area, otherwise, we would have recorded that and mentioned that in the report.
What I think would be interesting is there's no accidents now because it's a fairly light and travel road. And five years from now, I'm sure there'll be a slight increase in traffic and accidents along with that, but that's just my own comment. Okay, so.
Through the chair, may I ask what that four-year period was?
Of course you can.
Oh, sure. It was through the chair, 2018 through 2021. And the traffic data, I mean, the accident data is actually provided by Massachusetts Department of Transportation because every community's police department will have every year, submit all the accident reports to MassDOT so they could compile the information so we could look at them. And they could look at them in case they need to make improvements.
All right, so just for the record, this gentleman is stating that they're taking the feedback from local police departments who plug in their accident data into the computers. Department of Transportation is then measuring that. So I have to say that I would consider that to be fairly accurate. So thank you very much for that.
Through the chair, I think we know March of 2020, we shut down. So I don't know if that data can be updated. And if the board could ask for updated data, that might help as well. And then the other thing, I don't want to make an assumption here, but I think we always think more traffic means more accidents. Is there data to suggest that because of the heavy flow of traffic, there would be less accidents with more people? Or are like accidents always at rush hour? Or are they in those off-hours where people seem to be racing or rushing home? I just don't want to make an assumption because we talk about peak data and then it gets swept under the rug where an accident can happen any time of day. And if you increase traffic flow after hours, the accidents might be more likely. And again, I don't know if you know that data.
Through the chair again, if I may reply to this. There's like two or three different parts to your question. But I'm going to answer the first part with if traffic increases, the accident will increase or decrease. It all depends where we are. If you are in an area, traffic increases, there's a lot of congestion, that means people will be driving a lot slower because of the congestion in traffic. As such, there won't be as many accidents. And if there are, any will be fender-bender type of accidents. Now, the other part of your question was whether we looked at whether the accidents were during rush hour or not, if I understood you correctly. At the intersection of Auburn Street and Vine Street, one accident, there were a total of eight accidents over a four-year period, as I mentioned. One happened between 7:00 and 9:00 during rush hour. And three happened between 4:00 and 6:00 PM rush hours. And four of them were spread out during the day other than those hours.
So, thank you. It just seems it's spread out. It's not just peak flow is going to dictate the accidents. So looking at the data holistically and the amount of trips, whether it's peak or not, isn't going to tell you if the accidents are going to increase or not at those hours. Is that a fair assumption?
Through the chair again, that is fair, yeah. You can't really predict whether the accidents are going to increase during rush hour or not. Again, it depends on where you are, what type of traffic we're talking about. If we're running into a slow stop-and-go type of traffic during rush hour. And my experience of 45 years tells me that there are going to be a lot less accidents because people aren't driving as fast. And you know, if you're driving as slow and you get distracted, and by the time you notice something, you'd be able to stop the vehicle. Whereas if you're driving faster, and then you may end up in a collision because you were going faster. Because the perception reactive reaction time that you need to stop a vehicle. And if you're going at 20 mile an hour, it's a lot easier to stop a vehicle than you're going at 40 or 50 or even higher. Sure.
And then, again, I know it's just listed as accidents, but I'm assuming down Perry Street, there'd be more pedestrian-type accidents than there would be on Auburn Street in the future. Again, if we're increasing the traffic flow there. Is there a way that we can dictate if it's car-on-car accident or car-on-pedestrian or what the likelihood of an accident being in a residential neighborhood when you're going 1,500% more trips per day? Is there data that can predict the increase or number of non-car-on-car accidents?
Through the chair, if I may reply. I indicated earlier, we actually looked at any pedestrian accidents or any bicycle accidents. We actually went, did the survey of traffic, we counted for pedestrians and bicycles, motorcycles, trucks, and so on. So the accident data didn't show any pedestrian accidents at all during that four-year period. Now, whether it'll be increased or decreased, it depends. If you get a lot of people walking on the street, obviously, or crossing the streets, you may have some more accidents because of the fact that somebody's crossing the street. I think that was one of the comments that the reviewing engineer had about the streets, Perry Street, Pearl Street, and Weather Street. They didn't have any sidewalks or any bike lanes or anything. The streets are pretty narrow and they don't lend themselves to having sidewalks or bike lanes or even a shared lane on the street. As such, I don't think you're going to find a lot of people walking on Perry Street or Pearl Street or any of those streets because there aren't any. And even Auburn Street, the sidewalk only on one side. And Rockland sidewalk is on another side. And there are some crosswalks along Auburn and Rockland Street. And some of those don't go to a sidewalk. And so that tells me not many people really cross the streets. If they do, they have to drive, walk in the middle of the street.
Some more of a statement. So now there's probably 20 houses on that street, but you're going to add 150 units, the high schools at the end of the street. I would expect exponential amount of people housed there to walk to school. I don't see them paying the school fees for the transportation. So I don't know if there's a way we can take into account how many expected pedestrians would come out of this? And then knowing there's zero accidents, you can't extrapolate zero with anything. So is there a number we can put of you currently have 20 houses with maybe 10 people that are walking the sidewalks? I don't know what that number is, but we have to understand that if you're adding that many units to the neighborhood, there's going to be increased walking and those intersections are going to get a lot more pedestrians than currently are there. So I'd like to have something that shows that data or at least says it's not a safety concern on that aspect. And with that, I'll thank you for your time.
And thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
If I may, chair.
You may, please.
I just want to quickly, this issue has come up. In fact, the review engineer brought that up. And we looked at it. And to have a safe, or what MassDOT calls the healthy transportation program, meaning people could walk or bike to go to places, go to school, go shopping, go McDonald's down the street or something like that. You need to have sidewalks, you need to have bike lanes and such. And that's something that the town probably needs to look at and see whether they could, if the right of way is available on any of those streets. Those are pretty narrow streets. And then the town would probably have to consider providing some sort of walking facility for folks to walk down the street. But it appears that nobody really walks down those streets. If they do, they're walking in the middle of the street. And I don't think they do because there is no sign of any accidents involving pedestrians or anything. Now, would this increase in the future? Now, would this increase in the future because of this project? If a lot of children from this development walk into the school or shopping and such, you may increase the chance because by just introducing pedestrian to traffic. Like I said, no pedestrian was detected when we did the survey here. But one thing that we've suggested that the developer will have to consult with the school department, see how they could come up with a plan to accommodate any children that'll be going to school from this development. There's something that they're planning on doing that, and they're going to discuss it with the school department.
So I'm not sure, but we've had some recent 40B training and they don't include schools in these issues. This is, schools are completely exempt from 40B. And that's, you can refer to that training that we recently had, it's on public access. In fact, I was told today that the town will be linking those at some point, if they can, to the website of Auburn Guide to make sure everybody can see that. Schools are not a consideration. Now, what I will also say, they average about 152 apartments. They estimate, and this is not, this is an average off the top of my head, I will not be quoted on it, but they say about 50 kids for that-ish out of 150 apartments, right?
No, I think it's less than that. Through the chair, I think Mr. --
What was your estimate? The children of 152 apartments?
I think it's 12.
Okay.
In our current communities, we're averaging about, it's about 6%. It's like, on the national average, it says that there'd be 11 on the Massachusetts Association of Home Builders data, it's like 9.8. So it's like 10 or 11.
So they say between 10 and 11 kids for 152 apartments roughly? Okay. So again, that's where I want to make sure that we have these numbers. You know, as much as we are trying to negotiate with this, and I think we all know each other's opinions on it, we got to be fair and equitable to each side of this whole situation. So that's what really my discovery here is to do that. So, you know, you're talking about nine, 10 kids, basically, for this whole division.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may, we've spent a lot of time on the data, on the traffic study, and perhaps we can sundown this a bit. But I do have one follow-up question. I mean, with respect to your field, I mean, in a proposed project like this, I mean, what for me, it boils down to a lot of articulate theoretical assumptions, quite frankly. You know, and when you invest in assumptions, then you can lean data in one direction or another. I'm in that business. The accident data that you quoted, what's interesting to me is that it was taken over a four-year span where COVID was smack right in the middle of it. So where no one was going anywhere for a good year and a half. Was the data for the accidents specifically adjusted based on or relative to COVID? The lack of transportation during COVID?
Through the chair, the data reflects the number of accidents that occurred during that four-year period. So if you were to adjust the accident rate, which is what we look at, whether it is above or below the average in the area, if we were to increase the traffic, let's say in 2021 or '22, and that means the rate will be even smaller or lower than what we have shown here.
That's counterintuitive. So, and I'd rather focus on 18, 19, not 20 and '22. So if you focus on 18 and 19, there was virtually no traffic out there in 19.
20. Sorry, 2020?
19, 20?
COVID was 2020.
Yeah, it was March of 2020.
March of 2020.
Felt like I was in the house for three years. Okay, fair enough.
18, 19.
But my suggestion is, is we covered this during, my only, and I'll end on this. We covered an adjustment based on traffic, sheer traffic volume for COVID. Was there an adjustment made based on the accidents during COVID?
Through the chair, again, the adjustment will be reflected when we do the calculation because we have already adjusted the traffic for the 2022, going back. So we have increased the traffic already, even though I stated earlier, Mass DOT issued a directive saying that you no longer need to do that after March of 2021. But we added the traffic anyway, and any adjustment with the accidents will be reflected in that as well. Now, are you asking if the accidents will be lower or higher? You know, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell, let's say, in 2021 was lower or higher. But I can give you data in that regard. For example, the intersection of Auburn and Vine, four accidents were in 2018, one in 2019, zero in 2020, and three in 2021. So there's no correlation here. So it just goes up and down, and I can give you some other, the other intersections as well.
That's fine. I appreciate your indulgence, but I, you made your point. I think I made mine. Okay, thank you very much.
If I can just say, you know, we've covered the traffic scenarios pretty thoroughly this evening. I don't think we can really get much more out of this conversation. I think what we have here, I'm going to open, that's where I'm leading, I'm opening it up to the public in a second here. So the reason I say that is because, again, I want to open it up to the public. I think what we can summarize here is that we dispute the way the data is collected. I think that between this gentleman presenting it and us receiving it, there is a disconnect. What I'd like to point out is this gentleman takes statistics provided to him or takes information provided him from the state and then calculates it, extrapolates it, verifies it, and presents it. So he's taking the data from the state. We can't hold him responsible for the data he presents to us. Now, I can argue with that. I mean, I think it was Mark Twain that once said there was the three types of lies, lies, damn lives, and statistics, right? I mean, we can manipulate that data any way we want, and there's nothing we can do about that. But we have to take this data at state, at face value, that we can trust the state with their numbers. So that's really all I can say with that.
Okay, that's a bold statement, Mr. Chairman. But with respect, I have a great deal of respect for what this gentleman does for a living, and I get it. And I'm not holding him, if anything that I inferred, held him responsible for the credibility of the data. I think the data is credible, but it is what it is. It's an articulate assumption, is what it is. And as far as us trusting data from the state, let's leave that topic for another day.
I don't want to open up any more cans of worms that I already have. Yes, sir?
I hesitate now with that comment from data from the state. From January 2019 to December 31st, 2022, it shows 18 crashes at Perry and Auburn Street. And this is the Mass DOT crash data, the portal. So again, I would ask that you get updated data because I think some of those numbers will change. They're not going to change the fudginess of it, but at least it would be more accurate data.
And I agree that we would, okay, I just want to kind of bring us back into focus here. I agree that we would love to have this data. I even think that I would agree that we could even request a whole new traffic study. But what I'm also going to point out is that we have a deadline due that I believe we are in April 22nd. Is that correct?
10th.
April 10th is when the six-month window period of negotiation ends. So we have this meeting, we have the March meeting, and the decision has to be completed, read, and signed by the April meeting. So what was proposed also, in the interest of the community, in the interest of the applicant and all the other processes here, is we would very much possibly be bringing up the March meeting. I know this is other businesses for discussion, but since we are all here now, there is a very good possibility that we might be moving the March meeting from the 20th to either the 13th or the 27th. And we want to point that out and let you all people know is because we're working on deadlines here that we cannot miss. So in the event that is discussed this evening, under new business, there is a possibility if you leave that the dates might change. So please verify that before you come back to the town hall. So go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
So I appreciate you spelling out the timelines. I think, it's my understanding also, that if the developer wishes, they could extend that. Is that something that?
We are in negotiations, correct. According to the 40B handbook, if the developer is acting in good faith and we have, we are, it appears as though we are reasonably coming to a conclusion, they can agree to extend it. And yes, that is very, very reasonable, and we can certainly ask that. But I also want to remind them that they can also say, we've had enough talking about this, and we're going to leave and go to the state.
Appreciate it. All you can do is ask at this point, but again, just looking at that cursory data, including two years after, or actually, four years after, it more than doubled. So I just, again, that could impact greatly a decision one way or another. It could be favorable with more cars on the road, less traffic, I don't know, or less accidents.
And I also would like to point out that as much as we can claim this to be a safety factor, the state is going to override us. If we denied this project based on this, they're going to appeal it and the state is going to shut us down anyway. This is an exercise of futility that we're doing here right now, I just wanted to point that out to you.
I'm sorry for wasting everyone's time.
And I'm not wasting anybody's time, but, you know, the state controls this project completely. We're here to negotiate the best as we can and get all this for our community, again. I think people need to understand that. If we deny this in the April meeting, they appeal it to the state and the state lets them do it anyway.
Mr. Chairman, back to the chair.
Just a moment, please. With respect, Mr. Chairman, we're not compelled to run this through April. We could take a vote tonight if we wanted to, correct?
We could take a vote anytime we wanted to, correct. If we, up to this point, but we still have data to collect and we still have fact finding to do. So, but yes, go ahead, sir.
Just want to remind the board that the traffic study has been and is being purued by VHB. Just, and you have their response from a couple weeks ago, and we're going to be working on a follow-up response.
Okay.
Do we know when we're going to, do we have any idea when we're going to get the additional comments?
As soon as possible.
Okay, okay, thanks.
So is anybody, what I'd like to do now is, we're going to take some comments from the public. Again, traffic studies, traffic safety, that's what we're focused on this evening, please. So go ahead, give us your name and address, make sure you signed in, and go ahead.
Sit down, go ahead. My name is Dean Hazes, I live at 11 Pearl Street in Auburn. So what you just said struck me, when you say, in your mind, you're not even going to deny it because you're afraid of getting it overruled.
No, I'm not afraid of anything.
Not afraid, but you know, like you think that's going to happen no matter what. Like what makes you say that?
What do you want?
But this, okay, so let's go back to the safety issue, okay? This guy says nobody walks the streets. I have a corner house, I could see everything. I see minimum 15 people a day, every day, if not more, walking, just dog walkers, moms with their, a woman, I don't know if she's here tonight, she has a baby, every day. I know Paul and Donna, they walk their dog every day, I walk my dog every day. I don't need a sidewalk to walk down a street because it's my neighborhood. And I'm aware that it's narrow, and I'm aware of cars coming, I have ears, I have eyes. So, but you know, safety, you talk about, is the number one issue. The streets are narrow, he admitted it. But there was a number that he said, one to two cars per minute for the first hour or two during rush hour, okay? So I know you said 37, but there's 152 units, two people, two cars, let's just say there's 450, 500 cars at the bare minimum, driving out and going back and forth to work. And you said 9,000 cars a day up and down Auburn Street. And excuse me for my voice, I had a cold last week. So those cars have to get out. And when they start, you know, one or two cars, it takes a minute or two to turn left onto Auburn Street to go to 290 from Perry Place or whatever Perry, Perry.
We all get the roads confused, that's okay.
So the other, the other thing is this, I would just, I mean, common sense isn't common, right? But if, I would just, if you haven't been down to the neighborhood, please, I know you can see it from Google Maps, but just walk the streets. Every day, I hear horns beeping, you know what it is? The bus can't get by because there's a car parked on the other side of the street. The garbage man's coming, but the lady across the street has a handyman there, she can't get by. If you park cars in the street, you know, every day, every night, whatever, people who live on Pearl Street especially, because that's what I live on, facing Pearl and Perry, you can't get cars by at one time. Now you're going to have 337, whatever, in and out for hours at a time. It's going to be congested and you won't be able to walk down the street safely. And I know something's going to happen, and God forbid, do you want that on your hands? Say no, let them appeal it and take it to the state because it doesn't make any sense. It really doesn't, that area is just way too tight for this size of a project. And I know that they're asking you to amend the, I don't know, the bylaws or whatever it is, so they could double the size of what Auburn allows, right? They wanted to add a second-story or third-story building when that's not permitted. But again, traffic studies. And I mean, I know all of you seen right through this guy. He was being coached, right? Because it didn't fit the narrative, but his study was bogus. You know it, and I know it, we all know it. Three to four accidents was turned into 18 just by Google search. And he says this to you guys, right to your face. So that's all I have to say, safety matters. Let me walk down the street unless you guys are going to somehow add land and sidewalks and make the roads wider for everybody. And my last thing, I just was wondering, are you doing, are you planning on doing any kind of one-way or changing the traffic pattern for Pearl and Perry? In other words, like one-way out, they have to turn up Pearl, or they can go straight to Auburn Street or go, make a right and go to Rockland? Will you have that option? Because.
I don't think they're going to plan on restricting. Are you planning on restricting or changing? There's no traffic flow change.
Okay. Just wanted to ask on the record. Thank you all for your time. And please, if you can, if you haven't been down there, just walk the site.
I have, I drive, I looked again. Matter of fact, let me just ask one question, though, because I didn't.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not, I'm just asking for my own knowledge because I was driving down the street and I did see cars parked, but do most of those houses have driveways, like single car? No?
Not, I wouldn't, I would say, I don't know. I wouldn't say, even if they did, they use them and they have, because listen, nobody has one car per household.
No, no, and that's not what I'm saying.
I know, I know what you're saying.
I'm just asking because I'm not really familiar. I did notice cars.
I would say, Danny, have a better idea, maybe 60%, if that was my guess.
Okay, but there are some, okay.
Yes, without a doubt. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Loggia, sir?
Mr. Chair. Yes, Danny Loggia, 39 Perry Place. Mr. Chair, if you may allow me to answer his question. So there's single driveways, you have two vehicles per households off the wife leaves, they have to move one car, so one car is parked out on the road, then the other car, and then they, they switch and move. So yes, they're parked in the road. Yes, they do have, you know, double driveways, most of them, that, you know, if they squeeze in, they can get them. So yes, and to answer that question, and to the board, through the chair, I apologize for my Snickers. Some of that traffic study was just a little ridiculous. And I have something here, I don't know if you will allow this. I was asked by Selectman Corrine, he said he will inform you of his, he said, ask you to, he will provide comments in writing because he fell on the ice today and hurt his knee. So he is laid up for a couple days and he apologized, he could not make it here to the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think he knows the procedures, he can probably send them the email to the Department of Inspection Services.
He said he will do that, Mr. Chair, thank you. But also, there was 10 more, 18 more accidents that occurred at the 290 off-ramp that was not even brought up with Mr. Chambers. So, and in living there, the gentleman at 118 Auburn Street just last year got hit while in the crosswalk and ended up in the bank parking lot. And I don't know, I knock on wood, I haven't seen his system to see how he's still doing. There was another accident on Rockland Road at Pearl Street. One of the cars ended up, I believe, on that gentleman's front lawn, and the other one ended up on the house at the corner of Pearl and Perry, Pearl and Rockland Road. So this data is, I think they did it from midnight to 2:00 a.m. because even the UPS and the Amazon car vans coming up and down that road nonstop all day long is 10 times more what this data says, 10 times more. People not going to walk, people walk on that road nonstop, even in the winter summertime. The residents are pushing the baby carriages, the mothers, the new mothers, they come all the way from Highland, all the way down and around. Getting back to that accident, I knew, and both of those people on that accident going up Pearl were right from the neighborhood. One come up one way, one come the other way, son was in, bam. Now, also, the data is not going to include the 36 tractor trailers a day coming from the recycle plant up Rockland Road. That's not part of this data, this study. Now, according to the police chief. Now, according to the police chief, and it could be, it was either July, I mean, January or December, Perry Street is the fourth most dangerous intersection in the town of Auburn. The fourth. So, the volume and the magnitude of vehicles, Mr. Venakas' own calculation, that was stated in one of the meetings, and I went and sat with the fire chief and we calculated, two thousand, and it's right on the Selectman's meeting, two thousand cars a day from that building. And that was his testimony. That's not mine. I didn't make it up. We can go back and look and, it was, I wanna say seventeen, eighteen hundred, then when the fire chief sat there and did the calculations on the calculator, two thousand cars a day up and down Perry Street. And I'm sure the fire chief will add that up for you. That's a lot of cars on top of Amazon, UPS, the trash truck, the postal trucks. And now you're gonna have to worry about the construction vehicles up and down, non-stop. This is, this is a big safety issue, especially those construction vehicles pulling out onto Auburn Street. So we have a total of twenty, twenty-something accidents, just right there at the Perry Street location.
So, could I just, what I would like to propose here, if we could, because we are, again, discussing traffic, like, other people that might wanna speak. My suggestion would be, would the board find it palatable, or at least discuss the idea of sending the data to the police chief and the fire chief? Let them review it and come back with some comments for us. Because if the fire chief is having a dispute with the numbers, I find that much more credible than me, to be honest with you, 'cause I'm not a traffic study expert. I can sit down there and count cars all day, but I feel as though we have some duty experts that might be able to provide us with the information. Because even if we do take the information from them, we are still ultimately responsible for making this decision that may or may not go to the state for appeal. So, if that is possible, or at least for consideration, then I'll continue on.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, if you could wrap it up, Mr. Loggia, I appreciate it.
Do you have any other questions, I mean, board?
I do not, but I think we might have other people that wanna speak and I wanna give them time. And we have some other things that we have to accomplish this evening as well. So I certainly wanna give anybody else time.
One thing I also would like to point though, part of his plan, he submitted, and again, it has to do with the road, they wanna widen Perry Street.
Correct.
Okay. The town has a piece of property there. Is the town up to relinquishing their property for this gentleman to make a profit?
I don't know about the town owning lots there.
That hasn't gone to town meeting, because if I'm mistaken, that would have to go to town meeting for town meeting to vote, to say, "Hey, we're gonna let this gentleman..."
Well, if it's taking of an entire parcel of land, I would think that might be a problem. If they're talking about legally established setbacks for a very long time, then that really wouldn't apply, at least in my mind.
It's a strip of land just north of the power lines, and you can see it on any of the town maps.
Sure.
But, that's another thing. I mean, is the board ready to say, "Hey, look, we're gonna let this go through pending..."
Well, I think that what I could request is that the town side could take some notes on that and then they could do some research on their end, and we could discuss it at the next meeting. But I can't give you an answer on that now. This is the first I'm hearing of it, so.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up to you, Mr. Chair. I mean, as a town meeting member, I have not seen that coming from me.
Another interesting point. So, I see the town over there taking some notes. I'm gonna ask that they seek that clarification for you.
Because I would be highly offended as a taxpayer for the town to say, "Hey, we're gonna give this guy his property for five-point-two million dollars a year income that he's gonna make on this."
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board. Have a good evening.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Yes, sir. Name, address, comments. We are gonna start limiting to about three minutes though, folks, because it's getting late. We have a lot of other issues to go on, so I'm gonna rely on Ms. Roach here, who is my famous timer, so thank you.
Tim Daly, 25 Rockland Road. I will not take three minutes, I promise. We talk about accidents. I'm not sure accidents are really a big concern about this project. I think it's traffic. And when you come out of the Perry Place, if you go down Perry Street, that is a death wish to get onto Auburn Street. So what's gonna happen? They're gonna take a right, they're gonna come up, they're gonna go up Highland Street to see if they can get out there any better. After that doesn't happen, because that's also, you can't get out in the morning. I live on Rockland Road. There's more than one car at the end of Rockland Road and Auburn Street, no matter what time of day I travel. There's never one car. So, then that's gonna happen, and they're gonna come out and they're gonna go to the next road, and then they're gonna come out to Rockland Road, 'cause they're gonna try to find the shortest way to get to Auburn Street. There is no short way with all these cars in that neighborhood. It's just not gonna happen. So that's, that's my point of view. Being on Rockland Road, I see the traffic. Sometimes at the stop sign, it's back down to my house. And they're just sitting there, and then they go on to Weatherford and they go on to Auburn Street. That's all I want to see. My traffic, I think, is, I mean, accidents are, I think are low in the priority, but traffic, traffic and traffic is gonna be bad, okay? Thank you for your time. You're very good. I appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening?
Aha. That's okay. I just, Dean Hasas, 11 Pearl Street, Auburn. You mentioned a deadline, and I get it. I work too. Everybody has deadlines. There's money involved and there's, we're not the only thing on your plate, I'm sure. However, safety really should come first before any deadline, obviously. And I forgot to mention that regardless of the, I mean, including the people that walk, I see, you know, the neighborhood kids in groups of four, five, six, in the day, in the night, walking, you know, and it's dark, it's not lit up. And the track team and whatever football team from the high school, they come jogging by during seasons, you know, every day after school till 4:30, 5:00, and it's dark then in the wintertime, so. And they're usually fifteen, twenty, bunched up or stretched out, whatever. So, again, it is definitely a safety issue that, yeah, we need to really take a good look at. And again...
And I think what we need to understand too is, I think the board is incredibly sympathetic to the impact this project is gonna have to that lifestyle of that neighborhood. Believe me, we all are sympathetic to that. I don't think anybody here does not, at least have lost a five-minute, 10-minute sleep over that thinking about it at night. These are difficult decisions to make. Unfortunately, again, go back to that 40B training that we sponsored here and watch that consult, talk. There's very, very little, if anything, we can do with these projects. We have a limit, and by the way, this is the only projects that we have timelines on, distributed by the state. This is the only one that we have to have consolidation of power, water, highway, all of that under one board. So, yeah, there is, in my opinion, there's issues with this, but again, I think you need to familiarize yourself a little bit with 40B and understand that our hands are very...
No, I do understand, I do understand both sides of it. I just think that if the state took a common sense look at 40B projects all over Massachusetts and then looked at this tucked into a corner where there's nowhere out, there's only one way in and out, it's so narrow, so tight, they might even just agree with you and say no.
I wish they would.
But you don't know until you try.
Well, we're trying, trust me. But I think you can probably ask the town how much, I mean, how often are you in communication with the state over this, sir?
All the time.
All day? Pretty much every day, Monday through Friday?
And you're telling them that we don't wanna do this and they're saying tough?
Yep, correct. Exactly it. Yep.
And the problem, Mr. Chairman, is we're under 10%. If we were at 10%, we'd have more sex.
So, this is a very good point too, now that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was providing these statistics today and we were gonna use them if needed. Where is that my little...
Right here.
Can I have that?
I'll leave you mine.
Thank you. All right, so, what I have here is provided by the Department of Inspection Services. These are our numbers, officially, as it is now, okay? So we have the project's name, Stoneville Heights, Auburn Heights, Pakachog Village, Pheasant Court, Pine Brook Court, GDS Group Home, Department of Mental Health Group Home, Kateri Tekequetha Housing Corp., Habitat for Humanity, Julia Bancroft and Mary D. Stone. That brings us up to a total of 366, which puts us at 5.24% of the required 10% of the state. When Ashworth Hill, Athens Street and Perry Place, if they are built and if they go through, that will bring us to 1,033 units and put us at 14.80, which will be at 4.8 above the state requirement, okay? So I need you to understand where we are with the numbers. We are at 5.4 right now and with, was it Albert Street? Yes.
Yeah.
Albert Street finished, that's 320 apartments added to that list. And I asked specifically how much that would change it. It's only gonna bring us up to about 6%. So we're 4% short with the Auburn Oxford project that you see when you go to Walmart and you see that big strip mining organization going on over there from a different, a different applicant, by the way. I wanna point that out too. It's not this applicant, in fairness. So, I think it's important to understand. So, and again, we have 112 units pending certification with the state and the remaining units are not occupied and built, but those will not count until a body is in that apartment. Occupancy permits, we've argued, and they said, "Yeah, you can do occupancy permits when they're rented." So, our numbers, we don't even get to control the numbers. The state controls the numbers, just to be clear on that.
Thank you very much. And does the number of 10 kids for 152 units sound accurate to...
It doesn't to us, but that's the stats they give us and we're not allowed to question them, quite frankly.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just being honest.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I mean...
I just didn't know if I was the only one crazy in the room or not.
So, no, but we can question every one of these things, even as representing you all, and they go, "Yeah." Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Again, thank you so much.
So, just being honest.
I appreciate it.
Right? Careful who you vote for.
Danny Loggia, 39 Perry Place.
Get your three-minute clock out.
And half mile from the intersection of Perry Street and Auburn Street, Mass DOT has said 280 accidents.
Again, if you can provide, I appreciate that, but we have...
But it's Mass DOT.
Okay, so if you can provide those information, I mean, again, we're, I can't deny a project tonight based on numbers out of people's phones and all those kinds of things. Yes, if you could send an email, show those stats, show exactly where they're coming from, I'm sure the Department of Inspection Services will be happy to receive them and I'm sure a good doctor over here will translate those to the state, correct?
To the, you guys anyways, talk to the fire, the police chief.
Yeah, so, yeah, and the fire and the police chief, so we will forward those if you could provide them.
Also, Mr. Chair, I took a couple of moments to talk to Mr. Busby from the state on Tuesday at the Athens Street. And he said, "If it is voted down," and I showed him the literature from the applicant's application of all the misrepresented things, and he said to present it to the board, which I did a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "Just on that, that you can vote that down." He says, "It will go into further review to the state." So, I don't know, I'm kinda confused because I'm talking to Mr. Busby from the state, but you're telling me something different and my head's just not wrapping around it, and I apologize for that, sir.
And that's okay, but get used to it, 'cause neither of us do either. We get told one thing and we interpret another or we read another, and then we go back and we ask the question and they give us a completely different answer. That's the state. That's not the town, by the way. I want you to be clear on that.
Correct, and I did ask him if he would be willing to come to a meeting, and he said he would think about it.
Correct, which means he's not showing up and he's gonna let you come over here and continue this battle that we're having amongst ourselves, and he's gonna go back to Boston and laugh at us. I'm just being honest. I mean, I'm kinda done talking about it as far as...
Understood, sir.
The 40B process itself, in my humble opinion, is completely incorrect. But what I am doing here, and abiding by the rules that we have in front of us, because we have to be an ethical board and we have to do with the rules and laws that we have in front of us. Until those change, this is what we have to do.
Yes, sir.
And I, believe me when I tell you, 40B is one of the most controversial laws in the state of Massachusetts. It's been challenged in 2016. It was almost overturned, but the state spent three times as much money to say that they wanted to keep it than the voters did to say they didn't want it. So we lost that one again. So, there's nothing you can do about it. Trust me when I tell you. Please feel free to contact every one of your representatives, and if you haven't already, I quite frankly, I'd be disappointed that you didn't. Because if you haven't heard, if you haven't spoken to State Representative Paul Frost, if you haven't spoken to State Senator Michael Moore or his office representatives and filed your complaints with them officially, then they're not listening, quite frankly.
Mr. Chair, myself and a gentleman from Milbury, Mr. Steve Sterns, were invited to Boston to help rewrite the 40B. I can say that, that was in a meeting we had. I asked if we could move the office to Worcester, because there is no way I wanna put myself going through Boston every single day to, you know, I don't know what...
You'd think they would have at least three or four regional meetings where they would be able to represent the individuals that, as we go from Boston to Worcester to Springfield, that, you know, the changes would be...
You're correct. I asked for that and they said no.
Correct.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. I believe you when I tell you, each one of the members of this board understands the frustration of this community and nobody's experienced it more than we have. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, board. I just wanna say just, thank you for your service to the community. I had a question, and forgive me if it's already been addressed, but what is the threshold for safety for 40B? Like, what is, what is that, that threshold? 'Cause like, reading through the stipulations, it seems like the town has leverage if there's a safety concern, which seems like common sense, but the interpretation of that seems a bit subjective. So where, where is that threshold? Like, what is the degree of suffering that somebody needs to endure in a neighborhood in order for that to meet the state threshold for safety?
That's a great question and I don't have an answer for you, 'cause again, we've asked those questions and we don't get the answers.
I actually do have an answer, Mr. Chairman.
Interesting.
And I think that that was the best, the best articulation of that question specifically. It goes to the core of our frustration with this legislation, because it's exactly what you suggested. It's subjective. It depends on what board it comes in front of, and I don't mean local boards. I'm talking about if it goes to a state level, it depends on who's behind it and who's in the chair, and it's subjective, based on they're biased or not of the process and of what's in front of them. So the safety component, I mean, really eloquent in the way you stated, but the safety element is absolutely subjective. And I leave it to you, you know, with the polite nods of whether or not you think that's appropriate.
I don't.
But it's absolutely, it's absolutely subjective.
I find that offensive as a taxpayer, that, like, the level of safety that I'm subjected to could vary depending on what street I'm on.
Thank you very much for pointing that out, and I agree with you, and I don't think anybody in...
That doesn't seem fair.
The exception of maybe the applicants doesn't agree with you.
Yeah, and I know, I know this isn't, this isn't from you guys, so, once again, I appreciate your time and I appreciate your service to the community.
You're well spoken and thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Chairman, could you just ask the gentleman, please, David on the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. David Holness, Athens Street, Auburn.
Could you just do it in the microphone, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sometimes they don't pick up as well.
Dave Holness, Athens Street, Auburn.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, any else? Do we have any more comments, concerns? Okay, so, what I'm gonna do is, if I could, I'm gonna take the executive order or decision here that we're gonna move on from the traffic studies and we're gonna start doing some conversation here regarding the, the list of requested waivers, if you will. So we received these this evening, well, actually, I should say, this afternoon. And we have basically comments from the Department of Law and District, Department of Public Works. This one is from the, I believe that would be, so modern, regulations, so modern management. This is Town Engineer, excuse me, in DFW. Then we have the Auburn Fire Rescue Department. And, yeah, that's good for it now. So, the general consensus, if I may, is that most of the, if not all, have recommended that we do not waive any of the requested waivers.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, have we received anything, I've been on the lookout, particularly since we took the 40B training. Have we received anything from Conservation for Mr. Garland, who heads that board?
Not that we've seen.
Not yet, that I'm aware of. Did we receive any feedback from Mr. Garland yet? Not yet, okay.
Okay, but that, that request has gone to him directly, correct?
So, the chair, we went to Planning Board and Conservation.
Conservation is yet...
Planning Board does not comment. I haven't heard from Conservation.
Thank you very much. All right, but it is with him to review. Okay, we do expect comments?
It was out there last meeting.
Okay, yeah, understood. I mean, given his acknowledgement, and I think that he was thoughtful to come to the training, training, um, but I'd, I'd be very interested to see how he weighs into those topics specifically, that it being asked to waive, um, under his jurisdiction.
Anyone else? Okay, so, um, do we want to take these into consideration until next month? Do we want to decide these eve, this evening? I think the general recommendations are that we would not, um, they don't recommend that we proceed with these waivers for these particular items. Do we want to knock those off the list this evening and address them? If you want to move to the next meeting, I'd like to have a little input from the board here.
I'm fine to address them this evening, Mr. Chairman, but are you suggesting that we're going to take a vote on each individual waiver?
Uh, is that what the town is requesting?
Can we batch them?
I guess it depends on whether you're going to waive them or not.
Would you like my vote now?
If you're going to do it wholesale, that's fine, you can, you can go through the whole list and then decide, and then whatever you decide as a group, you can vote on that.
I don't seem to have a list of all the waivers in there.
I don't have one either. Do you have the waivers with us? I think, well, it was in past packages, so if you didn't bring it with you.
Okay.
It's because we've had, I, I literally have a stack of papers, it's home, all these envelopes here.
So, I think it's probably helpful to at least say what the waiver is-
Yep.
-and then whether or not we're gonna, rather than just say, like, no, we're not doing any of them.
Yeah, I think they should be, I think they should be individualized.
Darlene's going to-
I don't think we should, I don't think we should lump them together in one decision. I think we need to address each one of them individually.
That, that's the smart play, that's not the old man tired play, but that's, but that's the smart play, I get it.
Um, so what I'll, I'm sorry. So, um, just to, so we can go over these and get moving, so we have the Water Department, waiver of fees requested by Perry Place LLC for 16 Perry Place, uh, addressed to myself, um, and they go into a pretty interesting, the district has been awarded 12.2 million loan for the Mass State Revolving Fund, and the construction of this treatment plant, which we're working on now, totaling 16.7 million for PFAS treatment of the Walsh Ave area in Selphus Street. Uh, the district is currently conducting a pilot study determining if the best PFAS treatment at Church Street Wells, anticipate submitting another S R F loan application for at least another $15 million. Um, in summary, district has significant regulatory capital improvements that need to be met in the immediate future. Connection to the entrance fees for projects, whether pursuant to a comprehensive permit in the Mass General Law Chapter 40 or not, are necessary to help the offset expense of the operating water system, which is paid by the district's ratepayers. The district respectfully requests that the Z B A deny the applicant's request for waiver of the district's fee and refer all matters related to the water connections, including technical questions, to the district for review and approval. However, again, they don't realize that the consolidation of these responsibilities is brought under our umbrella, so we can take this into consideration. So, um, that's the first one.
Do we want to make a motion for each one?
I would. Do I want to make, do I have a motion for the waiver requested, uh, Water District?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to deny as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. Water Department waiver denied. Comprehensive permit. The Planning Board received an application for 16 Perry Place, including the following documents, site plans, stormwater drainage, engineering division, uh, applicant packet, no comment. Site plans, they refer to Sheet C5, C7, C8, Sheet C9, erosion settlement, rough grading, et cetera. Um, they have no comment on that. On the drainage maps, general engineering, consideration should be given to the construction of sidewalks connected to road development surrounding Perry Place. Um, they recommend, it appears at their utility pole, um, and this is all reference to the street, by the way. So one of the things they are going to do, and I think it's important to talk about, is they were originally requesting a waiver of six inches, they were going to go 18 feet with the street, but they eliminated that, they're going to go with the original 18.6, which means they actually don't need a waiver for that. Correct, okay. So we don't have to worry about the road anymore.
Parking, the parking, the parking is consistent, sorry. You're talking about parking spaces?
Yes. Yes, correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, parking spaces, excuse me. Um, they were talking about slope sides here, we're not really worried about elevations. Uh, walking paths shown along the back of the proposed building provide detail on the geometry and surface treatment for this path. There's a setback of 3.6 feet between the property line and one of the proposed garages. Delineate the edges of the walking path. So basically what these are realistically, after that one particular one that we are no longer involved in, these are just recommendations that you review in your plan.
We already changed the plans.
Perfect.
To reflect all these, we took, we took, there was a walking path, we took one of the walking paths, we took out.
Okay, so, um-
So everything's been addressed.
Thank you. So, um, as far as the Town Engineer is concerned, it appears as though they are addressing all of these individually, so we're going to rely on the, um, review of the town side to make sure that is complete for now.
Great.
Auburn Fire Rescue, if you want to include this here. So we have a, a printed layout map of the area, and what we have here is a sort of a rendition with two fire trucks next to it, and it's showing the direction of travel around the, I'll call it a cul-de-sac, even though it's not technically, but the perimeter of the parking lot. Um, so they have following concerns on the proposed development. Single means of access to the property, with climatic conditions becoming more severe and unpredictable, the Auburn Rescue Fire Department needs access to the site at all times for multiple types of emergencies year-round. Severe weather, snow, ice, hurricane, et cetera, cause accidents, bring down trees, pile of loans, power lines, et cetera. The property is almost completely surrounded by a 100-year floodplain. The only means of access require travel to the floodplain, and substantial flooding will leave the property an island without access. During an emergency, many residents will want to leave the premises for fear of the emergency itself becoming trapped. On the property for an extended period of time, with a single point of egress, these fleeing persons create additional congestion for incoming emergency vehicles and can hinder emergency operations. During an emergency that will require the, our use of our ladder truck, the entire fire apparatus access road would be utilized, outriggers at 20 feet wide, while engines will be pumping supply lines laid down the access road. Larger events will require apparatus to access to larger water mains being fed from multiple directions, like Auburn Street, Rockland Road, or Pearl Street. In the past, where projects pose the potential for large life safety concerns, the Auburn Fire Rescue Department has required second means of egress to be accessible, to quickly access the property. So what they're referring to is if you look at the reference to, um, Pappas Park, what they're looking for is, um, if you look at Curtis Street, they have a side entrance with a blocked gate that is never used, with the exception of they have to bring an ambulance in here to get somebody out that was hurt. So what the town is requesting is if, is possible to have something like that designed into it, where they could have an emergency means of access, maybe leave it closed or have a gate where it would only be accessible to emergency vehicles, or maybe to your utility vehicles if you need to bring something in.
Yep. Uh, so James Venocasas, 16 Perry. So I did meet with the Fire Department again today, because we've, we've met multiple times on this.
I'm sure.
So his under, so, you know, obviously refer to him and, and whatnot, but when we went through that first, you know, section of items, basically the re, we were not able to put a second means of egress, right?
Okay.
So with, with anything else. But that is why, remember, on the peer review, when you're coming in, it's like 38 feet at the entrance, there's one section that's like 50 something feet, and then when you're going around, we're actually 30 feet rather than 25. So we did that to basically resolve those issues of what his concerns are, because that's the best that we could accomplish on that, and he was like, I just, I wanted to put in the record why you're doing this, because I don't, you know, obviously with a 40B, it's a little bit of a different process, but he was like, just moving forward, I don't want to set a precedence, and I want them to know, you know, what our concerns are, that we did have that concern.
Sure.
And this is what we did to address it. Um, also, and then if you go to his next one, you know, provide the, the turning radius, um, 25 is what we're, what's required, we, we provided 40. So our turning radius i- is actually bigger than, than what was, what was required. Uh, the fire apparatus coming around, so what, when we run a, um, the, the turn lane, to when we run, when we run the, the analysis running around there-
Yep.
-if you don't have a center line basically put on the plan, obviously, it runs it around the project and makes it the easiest way. So when, when the initial plan came over, it showed on the section where the, where the garages were, that, or are, that, that, it kind of, it crossed into this lane of traffic. But obviously, so what we did is, when we got that comment, we put in a center line and then reran it, and then it ran it around the project. It just, you know, when you don't put, we don't put a center line in, it's, it's just running it around the easiest path.
So you're confident you've addressed the issues that the chief is-
Yes, very much so. Okay, yes.
That, that satisfies me for that particular one, so, um, any other questions, concern from the board on this one? So this is really not, we're not really requesting a waiver fee on this one, this is just a, some, some comments from the Fire Department.
The only waiver that we're asking from the Fire was, was it 18.5?
Yeah, can you just go to the board? Yeah, the only waiver from the Fire Department, correct, was the 18.5.
That's correct, which we changed it where at 18.5, so we're not asking for that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So we have that one addressed.
The list of waivers is right here.
Okay. So, thank you. We have 3.9.1.1 accessory use permitted in the residential districts in the dwelling of the non-residential districts, private garage or carport. So they want a waiver to allow accessory garages for 10 vehicles. And I, um, I don't, I'm not going to comment, I just want to hear from, does the town have anything to say about that one? Okay. So waiver to allow garages for 10 vehicles. Do I have a motion on waiver to allow garages for 10 vehicles?
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion for 3.9.1.1, the waiver to allow accessory garages for 10 vehicles, to deny.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion? Uh, second, rather, excuse me.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to vote against that one.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm also going to oppose that.
I think this, in particular, um, again, for the record, Vice Chairman Aaron, Mr. Cussy, Ms. Bush, myself, and, uh, Ms. Roach.
To the chair, just so we have on the record rationale for any denial of the waivers, so we can put that in any decision.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
We have the rationale for any denial of any of the waivers, just so we can have it in any decision or record.
So you have to have the rationale behind that too, if you don't want to approve, you have the denying rationale.
You want me to justify my denial?
Very much.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't fit. There's too many.
So I just want to make sure that, so Vice Chairman Aaron?
Deny.
Mr. Cussy?
Deny.
Ms. Bush?
Um, I, I gotta, I'm going to approve that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to approve too, and again, if we're looking for like a rationale to keep, you know, for the record, you know, if the project is allowed, then I think having garages there for some of the tenants, there may be elderly tenants, there may be, you know-
Handicap.
-tenants, handicap. I put two kids in a car seat every morning to leave my house, and I have a garage, and I think having garages, um, is beneficial to the project if, if it's approved. So, that's my rationale.
And I'm going to vote to approve it, so it's a 3 to 2 on that one.
Do we only need a majority?
No, this is not a super majority for this.
We only need-
Simple majority.
I'm sorry?
Simple majority.
It is a super majority.
Simple.
It's not a special permanent.
No, right, it's a simple majority.
Simple, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is not, that's why I said, it's not a super majority, it is a simple majority.
Mr. Chairman, could I just put on the record, uh, on their drawing, there's three garages total, two 10-car, one 8. I just don't think anyone actually said like what the garages were, just that they're requesting up to 10, so.
I appreciate your articulation, sir, thank you. Okay, so, uh, 5.4 dimensional regulation, minimum side yard of a 10 feet in residence R A zoning district, waiver to allow the side yard of 3 feet, accessory garages in the residence A zoning district. Um, I think that kind of reflects back to the first one.
Ms. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
So I'll make a motion to deny 5.4.
Okay.
Rationale.
Do I have a second on that?
We have the rationale for-
A rationale is consistent with the first, that they don't have the room for it. I'll second that.
Okay, so we'll do a, um, we have a motion to deny 5.4, and we'll, we'll, uh, take a roll call vote for that, so I have Vice Chairman Aaron?
Deny.
Mr. Cussy?
Deny.
Ms. Bush?
Um, so, I, we never talked about like mitigation for this, like can we condition this?
These are not conditioned, these are yes or no's.
We can't condition the waivers.
Mm-hmm.
Can't talk about it.
Okay, yeah, so we can talk about it in open discussion, but we really, I don't think we can condition.
Um-
If I can make a comment, Ms. Chairman?
You most certainly can.
Ms. Bush, if, if it offers you any, any solace, it's certainly okay to go against what I-
I understand, I'm just trying to-
I see you struggling, and so I don't want you to feel guilty that, um, that you-
I don't, I don't, I'm strug, I'm not, I'm struggling with-
Very good. Good.
The distance between the two.
I feel like that's a big waiver.
Now it's standing that I'm right, but-
No, no, I'm not.
Honesty.
Um-
And I just want to point out too, that there, if you look at the way this is laid out, these garages don't face any other budding property in the back of it, and it's wetlands behind it. So even if you go to the 3 feet, you're not going to affect anybody, nobody's going to be behind there.
So the, it's not next to somebody's, like-
It's not going to butt anybody's property, it's not, it's actually probably the farthest corner of the property, in fact, right? If I'm not mistaken? Yes, sir, would you like to comment on that?
Just to be clear, I, sorry. Me, to me or no?
No, you, you-
Oh. I just, just to be clear, in fairness, I, I just don't want to misrepresent.
No, that's okay.
Those, those garages do kind of butt where the, the neighbors are, so I just don't, I don't want you to, I don't want you to-
I'm glad you-
-misrepresent something, and even though I was going to probably get one in my favor, but I don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to represent.
No, no, I generally, I-
So it is, but honestly, it's, it's the garages, they're, you know, it's, they're one-story buildings and, and they're kind of a good buffer, that's, that's why we do put them there, but I just, I don't want to- there, but I just, I don't want to-
And I would like to remind you that it's ten feet for a garage, seven feet for a shed, right, you know?
Is there going to be plans to be vegetation, or trees, or fence, or anything put behind those garages to separate it from Mr. Largess's and Mr. or Mrs. Darcy?
Dacre.
Sorry.
Yeah, we have no problem with, if putting plantings up or, or something across there, that would be no issue at all.
And through the chair, if I can just compliment and, and appreciate the honesty of the applicant.
I don't know, I'm not going to lie to you, I know it's not worth it.
No, no, but, but, but it's brave, because honesty must be a detriment in your business.
Well, you know, no, we usually have good data to back up.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for bringing that up, I appreciate that.
Thank you, very fair.
Danny Largess, Theron and Parabellus, Mr. Chair, three feet, I don't know what type of, I mean, that's right off my cow pasture, and we discussed that before, and then when they put vegetation in there, that's not give, give them any room to maintain anything. So, you know, I would have to strenuously suggest a denial on that.
All right, so, again, what we, we have here is a motion on these. So, five point four dimensional regulation table, minimum side yard ten feet in the residence RA zoning district, waiver to allow side yard of three feet accessory garages in the residential A zoning district. That is the waiver request.
And I've made a motion to deny, Mr. Chairman.
And do I have a second?
I second.
All right, Vice Chairman Aaron?
Deny.
Mr. Cussie?
Deny.
I think that's a big asking, so I, I'm going to deny it.
I'm also going to deny.
Okay, and I will deny, five point four is denied. Six point seven point one one one, design requirements for parking facilities. Each lot may have one access driveway, which shall be at least twenty-four feet wide at its narrowest point, but not more than thirty-six feet wide at its widest point. Waiver to allow access driveway of fifty-four feet in width. Do I have a motion on six point seven point one point one?
Did you skip one, Mr. Chairman?
No, because I have, it was-
Oh, that was crossed out.
Six point five was scribbled out, not needed.
It's already resolved.
So probably, six point five, if you're on, following along your list, was not needed.
I apologize, thank you, sir, I'm sorry.
So we're on six point seven point one point one, do we want a wave to allow the access driveway of fifty-four feet? And basically what it comes down to, if you look at, one is twenty-four and one is thirty-six, it's not really far off. Fifty-six, it's like, well, yeah, so you're talking about six feet.
Okay.
How is that six feet?
Well, it's, because you have twenty-four feet and thirty-six feet. Right?
Yeah, waiver to allow a driveway fifty-four feet in width, and you're talking about twenty-four to fifty-four.
It should be at least twenty-four feet wide at its narrowest point, but not more than thirty-six feet wide. But what they're doing is because of the, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you want to clarify this, because of the entryway, well, go ahead, you can-
So what, it was actually a request that was asked for by the fire department.
Right.
So what it is, is, is okay, I was walking from-
You must, yeah, please.
So it's actually, this is right here. And what happens is, when, when they want the apparatus to come in, they want it to be able to turn and then come here. So what happens is, if you turn, and come here, and then turn, and this way-
Access driveway.
It's the access driveway.
This ends up to be kind of an awkward lot of space.
It's like a blotton, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so it's just, you, you have to open this up so much in order to get all these turns in here.
Right.
So I just, you can't accomplish that at thirty-six, so it's, it's actually policy.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, I understand that. Okay, thank you for that clarification. So do I have a motion on six point seven point one point one?
On this one, Mr. Chairman, six, seven, point one, point one, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Vice Chairman Aaron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie?
Prove.
Ms. Bush?
I approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
Then I vote to approve. Okay. Nine point three point six point one, multifamily dwellings in the RA district, maximum dwelling height twenty-five feet, waiver to allow a multifamily dwelling height of forty-five feet. Now I want to be clear on this, we discussed this previously, and I'm going to ask, actually, come over here to you, sir.
No, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
No, continue, I'll talk later.
Do you want to explain where we are with this, just because I want to have an independent third per, you know?
Well, in the RA district, it's actually thirty-five feet, not twenty-five feet for a residence.
Right, and keep in mind, that was just changed in the last-
Two or three years ago, maybe?
Two or three years ago, it was voted in to allow that, and that was a town meeting?
Correct.
Vote, so let's just make sure that's understood for the record. So it is actually allowable of thirty-five feet, so they're looking at ten feet, just to, just to be clear.
So through the chair, I think that this is one of the ones we should push off to a further meeting. I don't think we should group them all, but, because I think essentially a no to this waiver pretty much kills the project, and that, if that's going to happen, then I think that needs to happen with a vote and through later on. I think doing it tonight is pre, it's, I, that's my personal opinion. I think this is one that we kick to the next meeting as a waiver. We've talked about changing the heights, we've talked about, you know, possibly doing that, and I'm certainly not saying that we're not going to, but I think that changes this application in a, a large way, so I, I think that's something that we hold off on for right now.
Mr. Chairman, also, I think the same could be said for everything else on this first page, where we might want to push the next four off.
Okay, and your rationale behind that is the same?
Same reason. You deny the waiver to build three lots, that alters the project substantially, or three buildings, sorry.
So you, you feel as though these particular ones, so we'll go from nine point three point six point one down to nine point three point six point four, we should address those all probably individually in one meeting, is what you're suggesting? Do you want to make sure I understand?
I just think they have the same problem that Ms. Roach mentioned with nine point six, or nine point three point six point one, where if we deny any of these, it killed the project.
Okay, so I understand what they're saying. So I think these are basically ones that we're going to have to allow regardless. Can I have input from the town on that?
Correct, it's, I think an elegant way to say it, but the forty-five feet is kind of a standard waiver for multifamily dwelling projects. The three multifamily dwellings per lot-
Right.
The bylaw does allow multiple apartment buildings, if you have enough space, and the square footage, if you're building apartments, yeah, you can have a redo square footage. Then what's allowed? Sixty-four units in a, in a single dwelling, well, that's a apartment building, that's kind of standard for a forty B.
Okay.
The space, they really don't have a lot of space here.
I'm sorry?
There's really not a lot of space with eight acres with all these apartments. I mean, the space issue is, is huge.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, this, I, I don't, I don't disagree. I absolutely don't disagree. I mean, this is, this is the hinge pin to the project.
Okay.
But respectfully, Mr. Chairman, and I know that a lot's been commented on, on it pre, be, pre, being, the ultimate decision being predes-, predetermined, but, but in my humble view, this is, this is exactly the reason why.
Okay.
It, it shouldn't go forward.
So then I think that we will defer nine point three point six point one, all the way down to nine point three point six point four, until the next meeting?
Through the chair, the consultant might be present at the next meeting, depending on when you reschedule it, so she may have some more insight than I do.
Excellent. So, comments from the town side is, if we do happen to reschedule our next meetings and the consultant is available, then that would be beneficial to us, all parties concerned, if we can address those then. So I think that's a great idea. We've already addressed the stormwater management issue with the town engineer's letter.
Chair, there's a correction on the height of that, that's sixty-six feet to the roof line, to the peak of the roof. Sixty-six feet.
Do we want to talk about that, town side, sir? Gary, what's that?
Are they talking sixty-six feet to the roof line in these plans? Do you, do you recall that?
These are flat roofs.
It's not flat, he's correct, they're about sixty.
Sixty-six feet, so four-
But to the building height, where the architects says-
To the building height, to the top of the joists of the-
Yeah, it's like the midpoint of, honestly, was the, the architect was the one that said this is, this is the actual height that it's, that it's considered by code. This was forty-five feet, but to the, yes, to the ridge is, like, like Largess said, is like sixty feet.
Okay, and that's what we talked about earlier, about how they-
So what I'm-
It's how they measure it.
They measure it in Auburn.
Right, we talked about that.
A little earlier, right.
Can you clarify that, that conversation we had earlier, how they would measure it in town versus how they measure it in other towns?
Well, they, they, they take the, the ceiling height to the top of the ceiling joists of the top floor, and don't take into account the, the rafter system. And I've often thought that was kind of peculiar, because most towns do it to the, to the ridge.
But Auburn does not.
No.
So it's just a quirk of our bylaws that it says forty-five feet instead of-
It's different than other bylaws, yes.
Can the town take note of that? A quirk of our bylaw?
Well, from the towns I've worked in, and I've worked in quite a few, I've never seen it.
Understood. All right, so let's take that one. Quite frankly, I think you're going to take that under advisement. I think because, from, because I'm reading, and I'm not denying it or approving it, but I think a difference of saying this is forty-five feet or sixty-five feet is substantial for us to consider. So I think we ought to at least put that one off until the consultant is here and discuss that as well. Anybody else agree with that or no?
I, I do agree, Mr. Chairman, but with, with respect, I mean, and I, I appreciate the comments of the consultant, you're talking about the person that's advising us on forty B?
Yeah, Judy.
I mean, I, I, I think based on the training, and she did, I think a good job of schooling us last time, I, I can, I can respectfully predict how she's going to come out with that.
Correct.
I mean, it, it, it's not going to matter, it's not going to matter in her view, it's just not going to matter.
Well, it does according to the law, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Right.
So I, I think we're going to sit on that one, too. I think that's probably the wise choice, because, just because of the fact that we've had a, a twenty-foot error in the information, let's get it corrected, let's look at it again, and then we'll do it. All right, stormwater management, we already addressed, I believe. Town side, are you satisfied with that?
Through, through the chair, the, it's been reviewed to the state standards, not the town standards. It's up to the, the board if they want to waive the town standards. They're a little bit more stringent, but they've been peer reviewed by Graves for the states, and that they've met the review.
So just to clarify that, what the, what the town side is saying is that, again, forty B has the luxury of going to the state regulations and not the town regulations, so the state regulations, although are sound, they are not as high as standard as ours. So they have the ability to go to the state standards and not ours, and they need that waiver to exist on that one as well. I know, don't have a look at me.
Through the, through the chair, part of the waiver, through the chair, part of the waiver is also asking this board to administer and enforce the stormwater. I think it was DPW's recommendation that they remain the one that enforces and monitors the bylaw, not this board.
That's the next one?
I'm sorry?
That's the next one, I think, right?
Right, yeah.
Right.
So what we have here is the regulations regarding stormwater management, section one point five, administration. The AEA shall administer, implement, and enforce these regulations. Any powers granted or duties imposed by the AEA may be delegated in writing by the AEA to its employees, other town departments, or agencies in the town of Auburn, i.e. the designee. So they want a waiver to allow the zoning board of appeals to have the authority to administer the stormwater management bylaw of the project, which will be permitted under Mass General Law, section, chapter forty B and seven sixty C, M R fifty-six point zero zero.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so are they asking, I apologize.
Oh, God.
Are they asking, just so I'm clear, are they asking for us to have authority over that? They are, they're asking for us to have authority over that.
The applicant is asking for a waiver, so that we would have authority over it instead of the AEA, and they-
And then, so they're asking us?
EPW has advised, no.
Thank you, so, so they're asking us to have authority over the waiver, and then, and then there's the waiver itself.
And then our recommendation from our department is to not do that, because they believe that they should have the authority to at least look at it from a professional engineering perspective. They're not saying that we should or should not approve it, they're saying that realistically, an expert should look at this, because it is under a state waiver.
Okay.
So in other words, if we go with the state waiver, they would like to review it to make sure it's sound.
Okay, okay, and I'll just cut through it. This is our department, right? Our, our stormwater, right? Why aren't they just advising us on how to vote on this?
It's a great question.
Like, the, the, I mean, why are we going through this back and forth? And maybe I'm just oversimplifying it, but they're asking us to deny a waiver, so that we can rule on it, and so they can weigh into it. Why aren't they just advising us on which way to lean?
Through the chair, there's a letter from the DPW director stating which way that they like, prefer the ZB to go on these roads.
They'd like the ZB, I'm excuse you?
They want us to deny the waiver.
To not, to deny, they would like to remain, because they have full-time staff available for construction, inspections, and they're aware of the environmental sensitivity of the site, they like this board to deny the waiver to have this board be the oversight. They prefer DPW remain, be for that oversight, oversee the board.
But I thought everything fell to our board to have oversight over the waivers.
Right, you are, you will have, if you want to waive that, right, and you, and this board will be the minister of the, the bylaw, you can do that. But DPW is recommending you don't, since you don't have the expertise on, or you're not here full-time.
Right. The long-term administering of the stormwater bylaw, right? It, that's the, that's what they're asking the waiver from. They want us to be the ones that they go to when there's a problem, and there's kind of two, where they're also saying we only want to be subject to the state law. Correct?
Correct. For, for example, there's regular inspections of, that are required. Every time there's rain, make sure that all the, all the steel fences are in place. I don't believe this board will be going out to the site every time it rains to make sure things are in place, or piping is being installed correctly, I don't believe you have the expertise. DPW has four engineers on staff that would have the expertise.
Which is what we would want to call them upon to advise us on in the first place. Can I just vote on this now?
I think the applicant, if, through the chair, if you want to allow the applicant-
Just, I, I actually have a question as well. On all the forty Bs we've always done, it's always, it always goes to the board, that you guys do get, you guys are the ones that do approve these, and everything goes through you, but I, the ones that we've built in the past, we still went to the other departments, and they came out for inspections and everything, and that was the whole point of the peer review of stormwater with Graves Engineering, was that they went through all of our stormwater regs and approved all of our stormwater. So we have a clean bill of health from Graves Engineering approving everything here, so I don't, I'm just confused, because I've never, I've never had it come up where it was a possibility that they were going to deny these, because it's just, I thought it was just a matter of, it went through.
Well, so I think, just if I could, is, you know, we sent out, or the town sent out a request for feedback on these waivers, and this is the feedback we got from that one particular department. It doesn't necessarily, we have to act on that, but it just means that that was the recommend they gave us, the recommendation, excuse me, they gave us. But I agree with Vice Chairman Aaron saying, you know, it would have been better, or at least for us, it would have been better if we had just recommendations or advisement on how to proceed, rather than-
Yeah, I mean, I, I respect the fact that they want to maintain control, I really do.
I do, too, I wish I could give it to them.
But, but, but the overreaching process here is that it lands on our desk.
Correct.
To tell us what way you want to lean, because we know that you are the experts in that field.
So what I would recommend, honestly, in this particular one, I'm not, I mean, Graves Engineering has reviewed it, it's standard stormwater management in the state, it is what it is, you know? I mean, I don't think this really varies in term, I, I personally don't think, unfortunately, this varies much with this project. They're going to have to build stormwater management underneath it, as they do with every other building that we do in town. Graves Engineering has already reviewed it, they're confident that it meets the state standard, so, I mean, it is what it is.
Thank you, sir. And I, you, Ms. Roach, you were about to make a motion, so I, and I interrupted you with my, my inquiries.
No, it's okay, I mean, I, I would be inclined to make a motion to deny the waiver to allow zoning board to have any authority to administer the stormwater management bylaw. I think the DPW is much more qualified to do that than we are. It seems like that's what the DPW has said they would prefer. So my sort of first inclination is, absolutely not, I, no. Why would we give, why would we take any authority to ourselves to do anything with the stormwater management when none of us are experts in that field?
Respectfully, Ms. Chairman, it makes perfect sense to me, in that direction.
I see I have some possible comments from the town side over here?
Oh, yeah.
If you could please add, ma'am?
Thank you. So I think for, at least for the discussion, in what I'm hearing, the waivers came to the town from the applicant, and I think the discussion from your last meeting was to get input and comments, which we did. So we got those around to all the divisions, all the other town departments, and the comments that you have in your letter are from those department heads. So they are giving their opinion to you, because that's what, you know, you've asked for that input. And I think to Mr. Benacasa's comment, that maybe this isn't the way he normally sees it, I think if there's any question at all, our, our forty B expert, that she couldn't be here tonight, I think maybe hold this for the next meeting, so that she can clarify, because we do have the input from the other town departments, there definitely is a discussion, and I think it's, it's a, it's a good point that he brings up, in that you're also looking to listen to the other town departments, or at least take their comments into consideration. But just before you actually take that vote, I think it might be safer, in, I guess, you know, fair for everybody, to get the input from the forty B consultant. That would just be my comment.
I'm going to request that we take the advisement of the town on this one, and we'll, we'll move forward, and then we'll let that one sit until the consultant is available at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree, Mr. Chairman, but I, I quite frankly lean toward what Ms. Roach had said. I mean, I, I think that, I think that the expertise needs to come from that department. Why would we waive that?
Yeah, I think DPW has weighed in, but I also think maybe there is, maybe there is some confusion surrounding it.
Through the chair, I can ask if the DPW contractor can attend the next meeting also?
Yeah, I, I think that, in fairness, we've been here for almost three and a half hours now. I don't want anybody to have any, make any hate-filled decisions, because everybody's getting tired. I think it would be a good idea that at least this particular one, we hold off until the next, and we, we ask for clarification on that particular, because maybe, maybe the assignment, quite frankly, maybe, maybe when I put it forth, maybe the assignment wasn't understood, because I didn't watch it properly, maybe that was the feedback they gave, because I didn't word it correctly, so I think we should probably at least wait and see if we can seek some clarification on that. They might come back with a different answer and say, okay, based on what, the new information I have, this is what I would recommend. recommend.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. Right, crawl, walk, run. But, you know, I mean, it suggests that your instructions weren't clear. Nobody's going to buy that.
Well, you never know. I, I certainly do, because I've made tons of mistakes. So we have the Wetland Protection Regulation, Section 2.06.3b, performance standards, where the buffer zone provides wildlife habitat, i.e. forested metal land, otherwise undeveloped except for lawful existing lawn and ornamental or vegetable gardens. No alteration of vegetation or construction within 50 feet of the limit of the vegetated wetlands or bank of the 50-foot. So the waiver is allowed to disturbance within 50 feet of the vegetated wetland associated with the site development.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is an area where I wish Mr. Garland would get back to us on specifically. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to vote in a certain way. But, you know, we specifically asked for feedback from conservation.
Okay, I think we should wait for that, then.
Yeah, because I, I need to know how big of a deal this is from his perspective.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Anybody else agree? We'll wait on that one?
I agree we'll wait on it, but the wetlands have been there. They bought it. As far as I'm concerned, I, they need to deal with it. I'm a hard, I'd deny that tonight.
Ms. Chairman, can I retract my comments, and can we just take a vote tonight?
If you want to wait, that's totally fine. We did ask Mr. Garland, but those wetlands have been there for a long time.
No, with, with respect, I, I vehemently feel the same way.
Yeah, Tom, Tom is the conservation agent. He's sick tonight, so he might have had some input on this.
Yeah, and out of respect for another board, I'm certainly happy to, but I just, you know, want to say, I don't, I think that that's something that I, I wouldn't.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think that's something we...
Thank you for sharing it. I mean, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I think this is frankly, a, an easy decision for me, but, but, but we can certainly respect, respectfully wait.
So, can I have a motion on 2.06.3b performance standards, waiver to allow disturbance within 50 feet of vegetated wetland associated with the site development?
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Vice Chairman Aaron?
Deny.
Mr. Cussy?
Deny.
Ms. Bush?
Deny.
Ms. Roach?
Deny.
And I vote to deny. Auburn Wetlands Protection Regulation will stay intact.
Mr. Chairman, should we put something on the record since we didn't explain why we were denying it? We just said we were denying this one.
Okay.
Tedious tonight, don't you?
I just want to make sure everything's on the record.
What, I'll certainly, I'll certainly do that. I mean, I think what it comes down to is, is our, and I'm sure Mr. Garland could speak more eloquently than I, but the protection of our wetlands is absolutely paramount, and, and that we would be unwilling to encroach on the wetlands.
And I'll speak on that. In addition, the wetlands of that area are actually contributing, and they are tributaries to the Blackstone Watershed District, which is in a much larger and more involved tributary to the Blackstone River, and it flows all the way down that way. It has a lot to do with our water, has a lot to do with our wells, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to keep that. So if, if anything, I think that would be a rational reason.
And with respect, Mr. Chairman, why are we providing rationale for, for denial votes tonight?
They have to stand.
We've never done that.
It's helpful when running, running any decision why things are done the way they were done.
I have, I mean, I have no, no problem in justifying my position. I'm just curious why we're going on the record and doing it out.
Normally, whenever, for example, a special permit is denied, there needs to be a reason why it was denied.
We don't consistently do that for special permits. Okay, all right, very fair.
So that stands there. And then we have, already have discussed the water department fees that was denied. And then we have the Auburn Sewer Regulation, Section 1, Article 2, Section 3, same fee for permits. A permit inspection fee of the amount to be determined by the Board of Sewer Commissioners shall be paid to the Town of Auburn through the Superintendent as the time of application is filed. The amount of the fee may be, may vary between permits for residential and commercial building and other private sewers, and permits for the industrial building and other private sewers may be changed by the Board of Sewer Commissioners from time to time to reflect the existing cost of handling permits and inspection, and the impact of the sewer connections on the sewage collection system and the sewage treatment system. They are requesting a waiver from, so a waiver is requested from the fee requirement to attach to the water, attach to the sewer, excuse me. So we, we dealt with water, now dealing with sewer. Do we want to allow them to have a waiver for a connection fees?
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Vice Chairman Aaron?
Deny.
Mr. Cussy?
Deny.
Ms. Bush?
Deny.
Ms. Roach?
Deny.
Deny. Okay. Sewer regulations are done. That concludes...
My justification, Mr. Chairman.
Which one?
There's one more.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, you're right, no.
With respect to the town planner, town planner, right?
Sorry, I didn't see that.
Dr. Manon. So from a perspective of, of these services succinctly, the fees have an impact to the work that's being conducted, and, and it's important that they stay in place. And I don't expect you to write all that down because I'm chatty, but I know it'll be on tape.
And the last one, Section 3E5, methods and materials of construction. All building sewers or other private sewers shall be laid to a minimum slope of 1/4 inch per foot unless otherwise approved by the Superintendent. A waiver is requested from this requirement. This slope is in excess of the minimum slope of .004% for an 8-inch sewer recommended in Section 2.3.5.1 of TR-16 Guides for the Design of a Wastewater Treatment Works revised in 2016. Can we just clarify that one, sir? I think that's a little...
James Venakasa, so it's, it's actually just the pitch that's on the, on the sewer pipes. So when, I've had a lot of, some discussions with the sewer department, and basically, where we can, where we can get the, what is it, 1/4 inch, where we can get the, the sections that he, their bylaw is, we will, but there's a couple of sections we won't. So we're actually working on the calc's right now with him. And then he was going to come back and tell us, like, all right, then, you know, from this, from this manhole to this manhole, change it from this pitch to this pitch. But obviously, because there is going to be certain ones, then we have to ask for the waiver because there's certain pipes that will be. But we're working with the design with the sewer department, so...
And if I understand correctly, the slopes will be increased, correct? So there'll be...
So, yeah, so, so what happens is, if you have too much of a, if it's, if it actually have too much of a pitch, it's not good, because then obviously the liquids go faster than the solids, right? So it's, it's a balance. So what he, what we're saying is, we can't accomplish the pitch that he was looking for the entire way, but we can, like, if he wants it coming out of the building into this manhole, and hold that pitch, and then go a lesser pitch coming this way, then we could. So it's just a matter of calculation.
Can I ask a question too? Do they ever consider, has anybody ever asked you to put a waste grinder in line? Do you know what a waste grinder is?
Yeah, so we do them, like, the E1 pumps, we, we do do those sometimes when the, you know, when we're actually pump up to, to something, that we'll do the E1 pumps. We try not to do anything kind of mechanical.
Right. The reason I ask...
People throwing stuff down there all the time.
Honestly, is because, you know, you think of people flushing things, and, you know, a lot of water departments and, and wastewater departments have a complaint with those, whatever, the...
Wipes.
The wipes.
Wipes, the worst.
And they create havoc in all the systems.
They do. It's awful.
So, okay. I just wasn't sure if that was something they considered in the past.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know we have an abutter that, that wants to speak, and I certainly want to give him an opportunity. But I'm going to suggest, and this is going to be jaw-dropping for all of you, but I don't have the expertise in this particular, and I, I don't know if this is a big deal or not.
Well, if it was over a long run, I would definitely be concerned with it. If they're talking about sectioning here and there, I don't particularly think it's that critical, particularly if we have somebody that's working on the town side or a professional point of view that's going to be calculating these out.
Okay, and I was only going to suggest, and there may be expertise on the board that, you know, from, from a pipe bidding perspective. I certainly understand, you know, gradients, angles, and, and pitch. But as it relates specifically to this, this piping, I would suggest that we have our experts get back to us and see if this is a big deal or not.
Okay, I agree.
I am working with, with the sewer department to come up with the plan of what we're going to do. So I think it would be fair, just let me work with the sewer department. Let me come up with the plan of what he thinks is right, and then I'll obviously bring it to you with his recommendation and say this is what he's thinking.
And I think to be fair, I need to spend a minute, or at least a couple of seconds, and say, you know, clearly you can tell that the, the town, the community is not thrilled with this project, and you know that, you expect that. But I will say, I, I want to appreciate your honesty and your professionalism through all of this.
Thank you.
I think that's important to note, that yes, we don't like this, but at the same time, they have a right to do it, and they're trying to work, and it, it is what it is, and they're being, at least in my mind, fair and equitable as professional processes. So thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. Make it.
Yes, sir.
Paul Dockry, 32 Perry Place. There is a private main going down that road, so I'm just curious where this is going. Is it going to the side of it? Is it going on top of it?
So, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yep.
I want to make sure we understand the history of this together before I bring forward with that. So at one point, the people that live on this road in the Abutters had the town install a drainpipe that they had, I think, denied access to, correct? Or there is not going to be any access? But regardless, it's still there. So you're curious if it's going to be tied into the existing sewer, or if it's going to be...
No, we ran a, a private main down that road.
Right.
So we had to pay for it. Town didn't pay for it.
Right.
The residents did, because it's a private road.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering where this, this main is going, his. Is it going to the side of this one? Because I was...
Great question. Can you answer that? I can't.
No worries. So the conversations I had with the sewer department was really, really one of two things, right? So obviously, he, they did install a sewer main from their houses, one, two, three houses, however many are tied into that. They come down the street, and they do tie into the existing, obviously, the town sewer. So our plan was, you know, we can't touch his sewer line, it's his sewer line. So we would come alongside of it and tie in.
Okay.
The real, what I would propose to do, and obviously it's up to them, and we would work it out separately other than the board, is if we're going to be running a brand-new line coming down, you might as well just replace an old existing line, put a brand-new one in and just tie it in to where it is. Having said that, he's not obligated to allow me to do that or, or anything, so it's not, I don't think any part of this board's, you know, decision or whatnot, or really even the sewer department. It's really up to them, but we'd be willing to do it. But again, we, again, we can't make them do it, or they, you know, vice versa, so...
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, it does. But it's only like 10 years old, the main, so it's not that old.
I mean, I don't really know what, how long it was made last...
But originally, originally, when we did this project, they were, we were told no other main can come down that road. They had, everybody had to tie into that one.
Well, no other main came down that road for homeowners at the time.
Right.
Not for 40B people.
Yeah, for 154.
Just, I mean, I'm being honest here, you know?
Thanks.
Okay.
So we're going to wait on that one, too?
So I think we're going to sit on this one too, because he's going to work with the sewer department, and we're going to figure that out. But I will say this, the gentleman that is proposing this project did offer to replace it, upgrade it, or whatever you want to call it. I'm not suggesting that you have to, but I am suggesting at least take that into consideration for, for the record. All right, so I think we've accomplished as much as we can. So far, so good. Before I move any forward, are you satisfied, town side, with everything we've accomplished this evening so far?
Yes, and before we go on to the next item, the consultant is now available for the third Thursday next month, so...
She is available for the third Thursday for the standard meeting next month. Okay. Townside in the back, ma'am, are you satisfied that we've completed all of our requirements this evening?
Yes, thank you very much. I think we've gotten through a lot. The only thing that I would suggest, and we do want to make sure, if you need to schedule more than your normal third Thursday of the month meeting, just because we have that timeline that we have to make a decision. So I just want to put that out here now, because that would, like, you wouldn't be going into the April meeting. You'd have to have the decision before then.
Okay.
So just want to, you know, we have a meeting that our consultant, it sounds like, can be there, but just want to make sure you have that. I do have a calendar if we need it.
Okay, thank you very much. So what I'm going to propose then is, we've pretty much covered all the information that we can tonight for the 610 applicant, 16 Perry Place LLC requesting comprehensive permit on a Mass. Gennell 40B for a housing complex in 16 Perry Place, Auburn Mass. MAP 18, PASTL 14 and 15. This has been continued from 12/19/24. It will remain continued, open until the next meeting, which we are going to move forward now to other business, and we're going to discuss, discuss the next meeting schedule, why you are all here, okay? So Perry Place, even though the meeting technically or the hearing remains open for future comment, we're technically going to just shut it off for tonight, so we can move forward to this. So we have other business. As you heard, there was a conflict whether or not our consultant could be here for the next meeting. But as we just found out, that they can be here for the normally scheduled third Thursday of the month. However, there was discussion earlier about moving the meeting from March 20th to either March 13th or March 27th. Can the town just touch on that briefly to make sure we understand why?
So, the consultant indicated last time we...
Hi, folks. We're still trying to keep going, so if you could keep it down for us, please. It's just that this room has a terrible echo.
The consultant indicated at the last meeting that they weren't available on the third Thursday. I just heard from her now that she is available next month on the third Thursday. So that this board can meet at a given time. I would recommend you schedule a tentative meeting for April 6th in case you need to meet after that day to discuss Perry Place, but...
Is this being proposed to drop in an additional zoning board meeting in addition to our schedule?
Correct. On April, theoretically, on April 6th, if there's enough, if they're making a...
Again, this is because of the deadlines. Our six-month window frame is coming to a very rapid close. So the goal is here to be able to complete this project, or bring it to a close, I'm not going to say complete, bring it to a deliberate close before we reach the end.
Adam, are you suggesting Sunday, April 6th? Was that a...
Did I give you the wrong date?
April 3rd is the first Thursday, if that's what you were thinking of.
I was looking at March, my fault.
So we'll have two meetings in April?
Possibly.
Possibly.
It would be the regular scheduled meeting, and then if there's one on April 6th, yep.
3rd.
3rd. See, how do I get 6th, I know, of March.
Yeah, I was looking at the wrong month, my apologies.
That's okay.
I see.
So this is a tentative, by the way. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be committed to it, but it does mean that, how much timeframe will you need to notify everybody and get this meeting posted?
It would most likely be just Perry Place, there'd be no notification, or just...
Okay, good, that's perfect information, thank you. So it wouldn't require any different, you know, notification, et cetera?
Yep.
So do I have, do I entertain the board to tentatively schedule an April 3rd meeting, and then we can determine whether we needed it the next one?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Under protest, sure.
We don't need to have a motion on that.
I'm going to remind the board that I, I am a glorified volunteer that is going to start prepping his lawn in April, and catch up on football reruns at night. So if I need to sacrifice another evening, I'll have to justify it to my wife, who I'm sure is home watching me on television.
Adam, can I ask you a question? If we do the tentative meeting on the 3rd, and there happens to be applicants, applicants that are not Perry Place, you know, they're coming for a two-family or something, can we put them on the regular agenda so that the April 3rd meeting is dedicated just to Perry Place? Can we do that?
Yeah, April 3rd would just be Perry Place if needed.
And that would be backwards too, because the other applicants won't have to endure...
Yeah, because April 10th is our deadline, and I, I think it's pretty clear that we probably still need two meetings.
I think it lends focus. It does.
And it gives us a chance...
And that way, the villain in the room will be the Perry Place application that takes me out for another night.
And so we don't need to change the March meeting anymore?
So the March meeting will remain as such, 3rd Thursday of the month, as it always is. We have a tentatively scheduled meeting for April 3rd that we will know more of as it comes up. Yes, sir?
Do you want me to just extend, so you guys can just do your regular meeting on 17th?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to, sorry, I'm getting tired. The, do you want me to just extend to the 17th, so that you guys can just do it on a normal meeting?
Realistically, I, I don't mind either way, and that would be very gracious of you.
It's totally up to you guys.
But I think at the same time, we spend a lot of time discussing this, and we have some ground to cover. I'm...
I mean, if we wrap it up at the next meeting, we wrap it up at the next meeting. We don't have to go to the 17th, but I can just agree, and I'll sign whatever, you know. Typically, it's just an app that I sign that says that you guys...
With respect, Mr. Chairman, it's another example of how amenable and professional he is.
Because I want to work together, like...
And how thoughtful he is. I personally would like him, you know, to retract it and not extend, because, as I said, I mean, I've got perfect lawn to take care of, and move on, and we'll have other applicants. But I think it's a very generous offer.
It is.
Okay.
I think the only thing that I, I like about the special meeting is that it's dedicated just to them. So we've had a lot of applicants come, and who have to sit here, respectfully, who have to sit here the whole entire time to have a five-minute sign, you know, thing. So I think we at least schedule it tentative. If the next meeting in March, if we're in a different position and we don't need it, it seems like the applicant is already saying he would be willing to extend to the 17th if we needed to then. But I think letting the town do their thing, or whatever they have to do for notice, or like just making sure that we have that date blocked off, or finding out if the consultant can come if we do the April 3rd, and dedicating it just to Perry Place, I think, would be helpful. And then it, it cuts our 17th meeting down to just, you know, your run-of-the-mill applications.
Again, we can change it. I think it's, it's good to, I think it's good to schedule it and have it in arsenal, should we need it?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm fine with it. I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's do that. We're going to schedule a tentative one. Thank you very much for your input.
We appreciate that, though, we appreciate that.
All right, so right now, we are scheduled for March as the third Thursday, stays that way. We have a tentative for April, could possibly, again, might go to the third Thursday of the month on April 2, but just so you're all aware. Okay, on to the next one. We have minutes of 11624. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written and submitted?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the minutes for 11624 as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
None.
We have new business unforeseen by the Chair. Is the town aware of any unforeseen business by the Chair, not known by the Chair? Okay, yes, ma'am?
Hi, can I come in on that? New business?
You can come over here and speak to the microphone, you certainly can. If you just give us your name and address, please, ma'am?
My name is Maureen Atkoviak, Appleton Road in Auburn, and I wanted to let you know that the abutters letters, the one that we received, that was supposed to tell us about the, everything that was happening at the end of Athens Street on the 18th, that we did not receive it until the 20th in the mail. So I want you to be aware of.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but.
Because there's all the other problems with the other abutters letters as well.
Thank you. So one thing I will tell you, though, that particular meeting does not fit the criteria for deadlines. This is just a, that's just an informal walkthrough, and in fact, it really just to go over the plans with local officials, so there's nearly no decision-making at that time. So that particular project has not come before the board yet, and there's no, no permits issued for it or anything like that, and no discussion on it. You will be duly notified when that begins.
Okay.
I don't know when that's going to happen, but I will anticipate to tell you that it's very likely that it will begin in the next couple of months.
Okay.
I know.
Was that one issued by the town or by the state letter? Do you remember?
I'm sorry, I thought it was from the town. I'm sorry, I don't.
Right, it may have been by the state, actually, too.
They scheduled that one.
Oh, well, maybe you're right, but I didn't receive it in time.